Good evening, everybody. I'm calling the planning board meeting for July 14, 2022 to order. My first business is a roll call. Scott Self absent. Mike York here. Jane Johnson absent. Michael Day.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Richard Lane.
Here.
Bill Huckwepper.
Here.
Steve Malone.
Here.
And Lily Gallagher.
Here.
Okay, I'm going to seat Steve for Scott and Lily for Jane. Okay, I need a regional impact vote. Do we have anything on our agenda tonight that would impact the region? If not, I give a motion, please.
I make the motion.
Brandon Self makes the motion that there is nothing on the agenda tonight that inquires a regional impact.
Sorry.
Okay, second by Richard. All in favor? Opposed? We don't approve minutes. Anybody have an issue with the minutes? Any variations, changes?
I was not listed as absent from the minutes of us.
You were. Anything else? And I guess the motion would be in order to approve the minutes with the change that Michael Day was not listed as absent.
Yeah, that I am. I was listed as absent.
You was listed as absent, but you're here.
I was not here.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's what the motion is. I have a motion, please.
Make a motion with the correction. So.
Okay, motion by Richard Lane that we accept the minutes with the correction. Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, right's agenda, applications. First, we have a planning board 22-012 subdivision application. Public hearing is required. Joseph DiBianato on behalf of Keith Bell requests a two lot subdivision for property located at 537 Olmsted Highway, shown as tax map 34 lot 29. The subject property is located in both the business and rural agricultural districts. Second on the agenda is planning board 22-013 subdivision application. Public hearing is required. Wendy Pelletier on behalf of Mark Perry requests a two lot subdivision for property located at West Swansea and West Swansea Road, as shown on tax map 73 lot 12-1. The subject property is located in both the business and the residential districts. Next up, we have planning board 22-014 site plan review application. Public hearing required. Jim Pappard on behalf of Storage E Swansea requests a site plan review for addition of three buildings on the property located at 787 West Street Road. The property is located in the business district and is shown at tax map 72 lot 93. Next one up is planning board 22-015 site plan review application. Public hearing required. Novus Group on behalf of West Street Road Solar Garden LLC requests a site plan review to construct a 3.5 megawatt ground mounted solar array on 909 West Swansea Road. The subject property is located at tax map 71 lot 13-2, and it's located in the business rural and agricultural districts. Business and other business, Phillips Volunteer Merger, SWR PC Transport Project nominations, site plan review regulations, and other businesses as may be required. First up, we're gonna have subdivision application for Keithy Bell. Want to speak to your application if it's...
Well.
If it just all what we want right now is, is it complete? Do you want to speak to anything about the completeness at all?
Joe couldn't make it tonight, so I'm winging it myself. I didn't want to change.
That's okay. That's okay.
I've got 16 acres there, and I was just shooting for three to take off it, but the state makes it take five. So we went with the five. So I didn't have to go through a bunch of other restrictions on the land. All I'm doing is taking the back piece. They're going all the way behind it, and it's all the way around.
Okay, Keith, right now, we're just looking at the application, please. If you have, we have all the information we need, then we'll let you do a presentation. Let us know what's going on. I looked at the application, and it looks complete to me. Does any of the board members have an issue with the application? If not, I'll need a motion. Steve Malone has moved that the application is complete. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Michael Day, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now Keith, I'm going to what you want to do, whatever presentation you want to make.
Well, it's pretty simple. Just subdivided the land. Almost had most of the wetlands and stuff goes to the house. And all I'm doing is keeping that five acres to a buck, the property I own there. And I just kept the 50 foot aside for safety reasons. But it's pretty simple. Took nine months to get here, but I mean.
Okay, I just have a couple of things that would turn up the board. It's a shared driveway, which is authorized under zoning. Shall be recorded as an excess is easement, you know, remember, you know that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and our conditions will, that'll be one of our conditions. Operating and maintenance agreements recorded with D. Okay, you may have, you have no issue, right? And you also know that driveway by no Hampshire DOT required. Have you got that yet?
I bet. Pat, he.
That's been there for quite a while.
It's not.
Okay, now I can open up to the board if you have any questions, Mr. Bell. To me, it's pretty simple, but.
Straightforward.
There's subdivision. Are you gonna be, will you be building on that?
Will I?
Yes.
I probably won't.
Is that the purpose of your subdivision request?
No, I want to sell the place in front of me. I'm gonna sell that front lot. I don't want to be a landlord anymore. He's probably 20 years old.
Anything from the public? Do we have anybody online? Okay, then a motion would be in order. Go ahead. Yep.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking down the plant subdivision checklist. Why is that?
Which one you're looking at?
That subdivision checklist.
Mm-hmm. Which number?
14.
14? Well, because he's not doing any building there right now. So if you're not gonna build at this point, and if he sells the property and somebody else comes in and wants to build, then at that point, they'll have to have those tested. Anything else from the board? Then a motion would be in order.
Make a motion that we accept the application as complete.
Brandon Self, motions that we will, that application is complete. Not the application, that was already done.
Oh.
Motion's for it to accept.
Oh, to accept.
And approve, and approve.
Did I make that motion?
That's correct, too. We have to, okay. The signal other members of the public want to inquire, I'm closing that. Thank you.
Now I'll make the motion.
Okay, you got the motion. To approve, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
The motions to approve the application for a subdivision. So, Richard seconds. All who's in favor, say aye. All who's opposed? Hey, looks like you got it, Keith. Thank you, Richard. Somebody's gotta keep you squared away here. Up next is gonna be planning board subdivision application. Wendy Pelletier on behalf of Mark Perry. You're up, Wendy.
Oh, Brandon.
Speak on the application first, please. Completeness of the application. It looked pretty straightforward to me, but.
Yes, we did ask for a few waivers.
Okay.
Want to go through this?
Yeah, please go through the waivers.
One was, your application requires a scale of one to 30 inch, so we asked for a waiver on that, because we used one to 50.
Okay.
One to 30 doesn't fit. Number eight was the locations of profiles of existing sewer water services. Right now, there's no building proposed. So that would be, we have shown sewer and water services, but we haven't done profiles for them. 14 percolation test pits, it's on public water and sewer, and 23 state municipal access permits. Again, those will be applied for when building permit is applied for.
Okay. Questions from the board? Questions from the public? We have nothing. Then I guess a motion would be in order unless we have more questions.
Motion to accept this.
Right. So Lily, motions that we accept the application as complete.
I'll second that.
Michael Day seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, now you can go into your spiel.
All right. So this is an existing 7.3 acre site. It's on the corner of West Street and Route 10. We subdivided off the existing house, 2018, I think, into its own separate property. Mark Perry is here. That's the owner. He also owns a button properties. So this is the 7.27 acres. The zone line comes through in here. So this is some business district in front. So what he'd like to do is subdivide off a 2.5 acre parcel to sell in the business district. There are some wetlands. It was a former farm field. There are some wetlands that will have to be contended on with when they build, but we do see that's building lot.
Questions from the board?
Ask my, my review, please.
Yes. Uh, well, those are commercial properties, correct? So it'd be one acre.
Right, so.
Be one acre.
Yes, one acre.
One acre. And they'll have, like she said, when they, when they put forth a, a building plan for somebody to build, they'll have to address that, right, as you, okay, at that point. Do we have, we've opened up the public hearing now. Do I have anything, Betty, from the public that wants to speak? Mr. Perry, you want to say anything? No? Anybody on the? Okay, so. I looked at this as clear, clear cut. Hopefully, we'll get some good businesses in there.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Steve.
The zoning line appears to run through the second plus. Is there any further limitations on residents portion of the property?
Can you point us out there where that he's talking about that line?
So the zoning line is through the existing parcel?
Yeah.
This will be all business?
Yes, but the part was sitting off.
Yep.
Part business, part residential.
Correct.
Right, so that what would happen to there, Steve, is if they come back with a proposal for a site plan, then at that time, we address all those issues. Right now, this is a simple. Okay? Okay, hearing not to find the public on our close to public hearing. Any more from the board? And a motion would be in order. Prove the application. Okay, Richard Lane.
Other farm, I guess.
Just. We already did it. So Richard Lane, motions that we're going to approve the application.
I'll second.
And Brandon will second. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, I guess you're all set, Mr. Perry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next up is a site plan review for application. Jim Pappard and Pat of Storage Swansea requests a site plan review for the additional three buildings on the property located at 787 West Street Road. If you could address the issue of the application for us, please, as it's incomplete. If you would, address the application, please, first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim Ticker. I'm representing John Papas and Naughty Fine Antiques. The floor is a colored version of the proposed plan sheet, which was included in the application. I just colored it for this presentation. I'm just gonna walk through the checklist to show you all the information.
Show it like.
Naming address of the owner of the property is on every sheet. So that appears throughout the plan set. Tax map and lot number appears on the updated table on sheet two. Also appears on several of the other sheets. North Harrow and Richard's Hill appears also on every sheet except for the building elevations. So I think that is there. Naming address of the platte chair, my office prepared this flat, Dave Mann's office prepared the boundary line adjustment plan, which is. Name to vicinity sketch appears on sheet two, which is the boundary line adjustment plan. Prepared by Dave Mann's office. Looking at the operating corner. Names and addresses of all the money landowners appears on most of the sheets. Located around the front of the property. Physical features and uses of land within 200 feet of the property. Located buildings on the adjacent lot. Its residential uses on three sides of the property. Business uses across the street, Route 10. Physical features and uses of land in the 200 feet of the site, and that's identified on sheet two and also on the grading data sheet. Sheet four. Sheet four in the plan set. The perimeter boundary lines, lot area, its square feet and acres, and that's on sheet one, David Mann's survey is shown. Number nine, size, shape, height, location, and use of existing structures on the site that are proposed. They're shown here on sheet two, and also our building elevation sheet, which is in this plan set. Location, any existing and proposed roads on the property, ground new roads on the property. We do show the location of Route 10, Swanson Road, and also Cobble Hill, near the north side of the site. And no new roads are being constructed. Location and number, identification of access from the site to public streets. And all of the existing curb cuts are shown on the property. It's currently three. We'll have a discussion about this curb cut at Cobble Hill. So I understand those are going to continue to be utilized. I have applied to Manhattan DOT to expand the use on the property to add additional storage units, and that application is pending. But I expect it'll be approved. Location and number of parking and loading spaces. Those dedicated parking spaces here. Currently some appear on the existing plan sheet that'll be eliminated when there's access to the main area where we're expanding and constructing. And then being self-storage units, people park directly in front of the units. You go there at any time and see cars parked at the entrance door and the controlled access areas are directly in front of the unit. So it doesn't make sense to dedicate a lot of parking spaces outside when they're parking in front of their individual rooms. That's the pattern. Landscaping plan, calling for additional landscaping, and that's shown on sheet two. Location type, nature of all existing and proposed lighting. We have a lighting sheet. Separate sheet in the plan set, sheet three, shows the lighting fixtures that we're calling for, photometrics, a result from using that lighting. Possible plates. 15 natural features such as water, barns, hydro cropping, and wetlands. Sheet two shows existing wetland areas that are here at the rear, the west end of the site. And those are located, they were delineated by West Swansea, certified wetland scientists in Manhattan. 16 existing and proposed grades, grading is shown on sheet two, also on sheet four, which is the reading and drainage plan prepared by Will and Bell Engineering. 17, the size and accurate location of all existing proposed water mains, culverts, fire hydrants, and fire pumps. There are none, what? Providing water to these buildings. There are no restrooms on site, so there is no water available on the site, so I'm asking for a waiver from 17. And means of providing water supply and ask for waiver as well, since we don't need a water supply. For the storage units. Surface drainage patterns are shown on sheet four, which is the Bell Engineering Plan Sheet. It shows the location of the storm drains. Home for our property. And the stormwater detention area at that west end of the site. 20, it's a septic design. Obviously, that's not applicable. We have no septic on the property, and the bathrooms on the property, no leach bill on the property. So asking for waiver from item 20, asking for waiver on item 21, which is located in sewer disposal systems. And we're asking for a waiver on item 22 on site. Well, because there isn't. Item 23, soil survey data sheets. I did submit separately as part of your application. You should have those. It's all winter soils on the property. And in the back area, we'll pre-ventilize the fill, it's all there, to create that building better. On number 24, we're asking for a waiver. We're on easements, deed restrictions, or covenants on the property. And finally, 25 is the architectural plans. We did submit a color sheet showing the various. So I believe our application should be final complete.
Any questions from the board? About the cleanness? Now, which, which numbers you do want waivers for?
Items 17, 18, 20, 21, 22, 24. Six waivers.
Everybody got that? So now I need a motion on the completeness of the application, please.
I'll motion the application is complete.
Michael Day, motions that the application is complete. Do I have a second?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Oh, so that there's no warrant, right, so? Um, in the event of any interior fire.
Steve, Steve, that'd be when he does his presentation. This is just for the application is complete, okay? You can ask that question real quick, okay? So do I have a second?
I'll second.
Brandon, seconds? All in favor? Opposed? Now you can go and explain everything else that you want to explain.
Thank you. This is a site located at 787 West Swansea Road. It's the former site of the Naughty Fine Antique Shop. It's located on this area of the property, and it burned several years ago. We came in and got site plan approval to replace that building with three new storage buildings that are now existing and in place. Fully occupied. This is good. And that site was modified twice after that project was built. First time, at town meeting a couple of years ago now, the town voted to discontinue the former. I don't know if it was Winchester Road or West Swansea Road, but it was an old road before Route 10 was built. It was the main road heading south to Winchester. And it was discontinued for use, but not abandoned, when the Hampshire Route 10 was constructed. So we petitioned the selectman and the town, through a warrant article, to discontinue the right of way for the former Winchester Road, I'm gonna call, I hope that's the. Which ran along this west side of the property and continued to the south. The town voted in favor of discontinuing that right of way. The selectmen supported that request. So half of the right of way was transferred in ownership to this property, Old Naughty Fine. The other half was transferred to the property that was on the west side. This is the Barclay family. This area was previously owned by the town of Swans. We then purchased the portion, or purchased the lot, a little over 14 acres in size in this real land area from the town of Swans. And that land is now owned by John Papas, the owner of Naughty Fine Antiques. And then applied for and received approval for a bombing line adjustment, which added 1.74 acres of land from the old town road to the Naughty Fine. So now we have this L-shaped lot. This area has all been filled, with the exception of this dark portion of the rear. And this is where existing wetlands exist. We're not proposing any disturbances to the existing wetlands. But that land area added to this area, we have room to add three more storage rooms. And that's what we're proposing tonight. Two of the buildings will be 6,000 square feet in size, 30 by 200. And then the building in the rear will be a little bit larger, 7,440 square feet, 30 by 240. All of these storage units will be cold storage. The front buildings have a mix of cold storage and heated storage, or controlled storage. Access to the storage units for the first two buildings, and I didn't realize that in the staff report, they identified access to the buildings as all being from the front. And while they do all have access to storage units from the front, from the outside through overhead doors. The first two buildings have units on all four sides. So the end of the buildings have very small units, some as small as five by five, but all the units have overhead doors. The back building only has access to storage units from the front. So when you look at our building elevation plan. This ended this, it's a typical building elevation. So if you go to the site, you'll see green overhead doors of each storage unit. This is as large as eight foot nine inches wide by eight feet high. On the ends of the buildings, the first two buildings, you see the narrow room. It's where they have five foot wide storage units. So essentially, this, but this is also a wall door. So we have easy access into that space. So that's what you'll see in the back building, the largest building. The back wall is a blank. And access is only on the front side of the building. And access is only on the front side of the building. So that's why I say this is a typical elevation, it's not all the buildings. It just didn't make sense to me to keep repeating it. This is the look you're gonna see, and I think you'll recognize it because this is the colors that are there today. So it's been dark green doors and beige siding color that's existing at the site today. These units will be accessible twenty-four hours a day. In front of the property, there is no gate, you can drive right into the property. But you need a key card to get into the building. Or if you have an outside unit, you unlock your door and gain access. For the rear of the property, however, there will be gates installed from two locations. And you have a chain-link fence around the perimeter of the property to control access to this area. All of these units are accessed from the outside. There's no inside access, there's no controlled environment, heated access, heated storage units in these buildings. So, but it's accessible twenty-four hours a day. If you have a card to gain access, that will open the gate. It will close behind when you have to open it again from the inside to get out of the property. The curb cuts are gonna remain unchanged. And I have filed with the Hampshire DOT to expand the use of the curb cuts for this additional, these additional buildings. Traffic can we anticipate to be generated? I refer to the trip generation manual that's published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. But in reality, these numbers are way too high. In practice, and John Pappas owns hundreds of units now between Swansea, Keene, Waltham, and Hampshire. And with key card access, you get a real good, accurate count how many people are coming in and out of your site. And so the site of this facility, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, indicates we can expect up to forty-nine additional trips per day. In reality, we're gonna get eight or ten. That's what John has been seeing in all of his facilities. We've also done work on other storage unit facilities in Swansea, in Keene, and in Winchester. It's the same results that, once you've got your unit, and once you've filled it, unless you're operating a business out of that unit, some people do that. They only visit it a few times a year, so there is not a lot of traffic in there. So this is a very conservative estimate of the traffic generated in reality. Drainage, drainage grading and erosion control. I worked with Ron Bell Engineering. We come up with our drainage plan. And then this is planned, stamp wire on Bell. Calling for catch basins to be installed in areas between the buildings. So these are all level, there are no steps up and down. Pavement in these areas will go up and down to force surface drainage into the catch basins. Then it goes to another storm drain line on the north side of the property, back to the stormwater detention area on the west side of the site. This area is sized for a twenty-five-year design storm. And it probably doesn't mean a lot to you. When I started this business back in the nineteen seventies, sorry to say, a twenty-five-year design storm was two inches of rain in a twenty-four-hour period. Today, a twenty-five-year design storm is four point nine five inches of rain in a twenty-four-hour period. So it's more than doubled over the last forty years. So these stormwater facilities are being constructed larger and larger because in real-world events, that's what's happening, and that means, I think you all recognize this. So this was designed for four point nine five-inch rainstorm in twenty-four hours. And it's stored entirely within this facility. If we get a larger rainfall event, and/or if there's a lot of snowmelt associated with a rainfall event, this area can overflow, it overflows onto the Naughty Pine property and dissipates into the vegetated area. John Pappas also owns the remaining thirteen acres here, which is mostly wetlands. And it's a natural receiving area, any of that excess runoff will occur. And that's what would be directed. So we're not increasing runoff anywhere other than on our own property. And we're storing that storm entirely inside. Do provide a lighting plan, a lighting plan.
We have questions about specific parts, or do we wait?
Yeah, once it gets done, and then, then just, we'll give plenty of time for questions.
Give by the lighting plan. And these are all wall-mounted units, so they're only mounted at any and above the ground surface. So we're not big pole lights, we'll shine a lot of light outside. These are full cutoff fixtures. As you can see here, the light lenses on the bottom of the fixture will shine straight down. And so it provides very controlled light in all the areas between the buildings. These light levels that we're calling for are very low. Much lower than I would normally ask the lighting engineer to provide on the retail side with another commercial side. But for this type of use, the activity levels are so low, you just don't need a lot of light. There's also not a lot of ambient light from other uses around this area. So the area isn't all lit up at night. So even though this is a low level of light, it will appear like plenty of light because everything's dark around it. So because of that, even though we only have an average of zero point six four-foot candles, probably doesn't mean anything to you either. That's a low level of light. So it's not offensive to the neighbors, it's not gonna create visibility issues for anybody driving by in the camp. When you call the Hill. We usually look at a ratio of the average light levels to the minimum light levels. Call that a uniformity ratio. And that gives us a measure of the variation in light. If you're in a bright room like this, and you opened a closet door and looked into a dark closet, you probably don't see anything, it just looks black, it looks dark. That's because the uniformity ratio is high. The lower the uniformity ratio, the more even the light levels are in all the areas. And that's what we're getting here, because the light levels are so low. It's, it's almost off the charts. It's a good practice for storage facilities, because they just don't need all that excess light that you've seen on a lot of furniture. Utilities, we are extending electric utilities. Right now, the first two storage buildings on the front of the lawn area have a common electric service, that services both buildings. The third building has a separate service coming from the existing hall into this building, into the central portion of the building. The power will be extended, and I consulted with the electrical contractor today to confirm this. They will provide power to the gates, because these are electric control gates. Then they will provide a conduit for the north end of each of these buildings, where the power will be extended into the buildings to provide the light and access on the inside space. And I understand staff recommended that we add it to the plan, so I can do that as the board makes that a condition approved. But that's how important. This property is not in a hundred-year floodplain. Well, we are adding landscaping. I'm calling for the addition of a row of arbor lightings along the north side of the property. And that's because if you go to the site today, which, which we do, and look to the north in this area, well, there are some trees in here, but it's thin. The understory is very thin, and there's an open field. And then there's the residence, the Barclay residence, in the distance. So I'm planting these that fell in in the understory. And then this type of arbor lightings, they grow very quickly, they'll grow together very quickly, and they grow to a twenty-foot height. So it'll provide a year-round screen, up to twenty feet tall in this location, which I think would be very effective screening between the residential property and this storage. We also have a chain-link fence here, which controls access and security at the site. And then, I wanted to point out to you that I'm not calling for additional plantings in this area other than low and sea of fabric and stones in this area, because this is where our storm drain is located. So we have the underground pipes, twelve- and fifteen-inch conduits or pipes. They carry our stormwater back down here to the stormwater collection area at the west side of the site. And you can't plant trees on top of that storm drain system. And we also wanted to keep this area open for snow storage. So if you can envision plowing on a site like this, they're gonna plow to the north and to the south to clear snow from those stores on the buildings. So we need snow storage areas in both of these locations, so keeping these yard areas open. So they will have that stabilization with the stones and fabric. And they will have plantings also on the south side, the same arbor lighting treatments on that location. So I'm hoping the board will find that adequate for screening and for landscaping. Wetlands, the wetlands were delineated by Russ Huntley, certified wetland scientist. And there's two areas located here on the west side of the site. And then extensive wetland areas into the land to the west. That's also owned by John Pappas, so we're not proposing any impacts to the wetland areas. They will be protected during construction on the cell fence. It'll be installed in this area, that gets already in place if you go to the site today. Architectural appearance, I think I already covered that with you, and I went over the waivers. So, I'm doing this, sorry for your inconvenience. The curb cut to Cobble Hill Road, this curb cut, Mike Jasmine approached me after the boundary line adjustment and said, Jim, we want you to close that curb cut. But they used that curb cut, Naughty Pine has used that curb cut in the past. When they had the antique business here, they used, used that curb cut. They didn't build that curb cut. That curb cut was part of the old roadway that existed on the west side of the building. And when the road was discontinued, the gravel curb cut to Cobble Hill Road remained. So we've never done anything to alter it or improve it, but John wants to keep using it. So if he has to apply for a separate driveway permit, even though that curb cut is, I mean, this road appeared on plans back in eighteen ninety-eight. That's how old the road was. That curb cut has been there since that time. But if he needs a separate driveway permit to use it, then we'll be happy to apply for that. If the board feels strongly that it should be closed and shouldn't be utilized, then, then please tell me that. I don't know what John's answer will be, and I don't know if he's here. He hasn't made it here yet, yet to lay a name. Oh, yes, okay. Then please indicate that. I do want to point out to you, remember we discussed briefly about traffic and how low the numbers are? I asked John, how many people are using this curb cut on a daily basis? It's one or two. It's all of it. It's not a high-activity traffic area. It's a hundred feet from the intersection at Route ten, so it's a safe distance. It has good line of sight in both directions. And it's such a low volume of traffic, I don't see where it's a safety issue or a problem. If the planning board feels it should be paved, then tell us that, and I'm sure John will be happy to consider paving. What else did you have, Sarah? I think I addressed everything else.
I thought it was one more thing, but I don't know if this is the time to add it to the list. Is it the time to add it to the list?
Sure, go right ahead.
Um, the gated access to the new buildings, could a Knox box be added to those?
Yes.
For fire, okay.
On, excuse me, on your, your plan, you have a storm drain to the, so we'll say to the north side of the proposal.
Yeah.
Okay. And you're, you're pushing the snow off to the south side. Why is there not a drain to both sides, actually? Is there a drain on the south side?
There's a soil here that leads any runoff. The lot is sloped, so any snowmelt will come back into the parking lot and come into the drainage system.
Okay, you've got a, what is your slope then, south to north?
Well, the slope between the eligible property and catch basins. This is five oh two point three, and it's five oh two. So it's sloping a third of a foot, four inches, and probably fifty feet. So it's less than one percent. But it's positive slope back into the site, into our storm drainage system.
Okay, so maybe I'm missing something, because I can't see, I can't see this. How many drains do you have across the front of the first building?
We have two catch basins here and here.
Okay.
So there's a high point in between. So this is a bowl shape between the buildings and this high point into this catch basin. Same thing here, this is, this is the high point down into here, high point back into here. So it's collected through this twelve-inch line and brought down to the north end of the property where it enters the drain manhole, not a catch basin, it has a solid cover. And this is a fifteen-inch line that carries all the water to the rear. Same thing between the next two buildings and.
Okay, so looking at your, your slope off, off of each side, south and, well, off the south side, is that vertical or descending? Because I can't, I can't tell whether.
This is, right, so it's five oh two point three on the edge of the pavement.
Okay.
Okay, so that's a vertical elevation, and then it slopes down.
Okay, excuse me, off the edge of your property.
This is going down.
So it's going down, okay, all of that's going down, and to the back it's going down, correct? Okay, as a conservation.
They have, and Barbara's here, Barbara's here to time in when we open up the public hearing.
Okay.
I, I think that's why you're here, right, Barbara?
Well, I'm on CommCom, though.
You're not CommCom? Do we have any CommCom here? I know they didn't bring this issue up, because I was at their meeting.
Okay, I'm bringing it up.
Okay, that's fine, you can bring it up.
I'm just, I'm concerned about the law. And what your wetlands, if you have snow removal in there, your chemicals, et cetera, going into that area, why the Conservation Commission has not said something about it, I don't know. I'm concerned about what would happen.
I don't recall them saying anything.
I haven't heard any concerns, but over all the years I've been doing this, usually when we have snow storage areas, we anticipate they'll be melting in that snow storage area, and it will contain salts, unless this is in a prohibitive zone for using salts. And it'll enter the vegetated area. All of this property slopes down to the rear into the Pappas property. As you recall, not too many years ago, this was a ponded area. And the Hampshire DOT, in their wisdom, took the boards out under the bridge at Route ten and drained the pond. So we lost the fire pond that was in existence at the time. We tried to recreate a smaller version of it. I don't know if it's functional or not, you know, Bill? The hydrant's still there, the dry hydrant, it was still a small ponded area just south of the site. But, so all of this area is now vegetated wetlands. And for us to drain through the vegetation into another vegetated area, that's ideal for handling the waste of meltwater from snowfalls.
I'm still concerned about it. Again, I'd like to get their input on it. There being the Conservation, because I, I'm not.
Because they haven't sent us any, and when I was at the meeting, I didn't hear anything brought up about that at all. Or any other concerns. Oh, yes. I guess, or I would have, you know, put it on hold, because we don't do, right now, we don't do projects without CommCom being involved in it first, so they can give us our comments. But they did not give any at that meeting, and I just talked to Sarah, and they have not forward any concerns at all.
There's a lot of impervious additions to this property that are now in that same range. And you, you mentioned twice now that John Pappas owns the property in the back, but that, does that mean that he will always own the property in the back and doesn't care?
It might be difficult to sell.
It's a pretty large wetland area, unless.
It's pretty much swamp, so it's pretty hard to do anything with it. I guess you could sell it if you wanted to raise swamp creatures or something.
Well, it depends on what, what gets drained into that swamp, too.
Yeah, that's true.
Is there any restrictions on what kinds of things can be stored in?
Yes. All storage units today have similar restrictions, no flammable, no explosives. You know, they can't bring in barrels of oil or gasoline, things like that, they're just prohibited. So it's, there's information handed out every time they rent units. That details what's allowed, what's not allowed. I don't know that they actually inspect units, but. I don't know that they actually inspect units, but usually the people managing the facilities are there when a new unit owner is taking his unit to occupy. I suppose they could sneak in something in the middle of the night because it is open twenty-four hours a day. But there is security, there are cameras available, so they wouldn't get away with it if they caused a problem with something they were bringing to the site.
I ask you a question.
No, well, we gotta wait until we open up the public hearing, because he's a member of the public, then you can ask it. What I like to do right now is let's address the waivers that he has and get those out of the way. Whatever the board feels about them. Take them one at a time again, or do you wanna? On seventeen, the size and accurate location of all existing and proposed water mains on culverts and fire hydrants and fire ponds. Steve, go ahead.
I have a. You have a. I have a question with that, it goes back to when you were saying.
Well, let's just address seventeen right now, then when we get down to that one. Let's ju- address these one at a time.
Yeah, well, that's where I have seventeen on fire hydrants and whatnot. You mentioned that you have monitoring at night. When you, when people come in, they first move in. But if I come in on Tuesday morning and I bring my snow blower, my lawnmower, my outboard engine, my outboard gas tank, all of which contain gas, and it's not properly vented, I can have an interior fire. I can create, you know, the atmosphere for one. And without any fire suppression. And without a fire hydrant nearby. I think, I, I feel it's a severe danger. In that order to that you require firefighters, first responders, and you join the units.
Should I respond?
Yes, go right ahead, respond.
Well, I disagree with your characterization, I guess, that it's a severe hazard. I don't feel that it is. A lawnmower or a snow blower doesn't have a large volume of gasoline that can result in a large uncontrolled fire. There are fire hydrants on Route ten at short distance down the road. My understanding is, and I've done a lot of work over the years with fire suppression systems in Swansea. It's a big hindrance for, for development and economic development. And it's a constraint that a lot of my clients have a hard time overcoming. And we worked on it and we proposed John Deere next to Gamarlos, brand new building, large building. And they require a sprinkler system. So it becomes a tremendous expense for the builder, the owner of that building, if he has to put in his own fire protection system and can't rely on a water supply from the town. The well, at that time, had a constraint built into the discharge line coming out of the pump station that limited the water coming out to five hundred gallons a minute. And if there was some activity of the fire truck or counter fire hydrant was trying to draw out more than five hundred gallons a minute, which they would do, a normal pump truck, then the well shut down. And they lost water. When Naughty Pine was burning, the fire pond was gone. It had been drained by New Hampshire DOT. And the fire department responded with their pump truck. And they pumped their five or ten thousand gallons of water. And then they were done. The fire hydrant down the street that they hooked into, they couldn't draw any water out because the well shut down. So my understanding is that has been changed. The owner of the Homestead mill need for the change in controls so that now, when the well shut down, it didn't shut off. It just stopped pumping. And if the fire department was drawing more water out of that line than five hundred gallons a minute, they were siphoning it out of that well. And it no longer prohibited that flow. So there will be some limited fire protection, better than what you had just three years ago. And available in the hydrants that exist on Route ten. So that's an improvement in the right direction. I've been to the selection and in the past, and talked to them about doing something. Like a grant, do something, create a series of fire ponds around the area that are close enough by that the fire department has a chance to fight a fire and keep it under control. So that's a real issue for Swansea. I understand that, that's an implication. But what we're building here, the building code doesn't require a fire suppression system. It's just not a requirement in the building code because of the size of the unit, so the use of space. So it's seen as a low risk. And as long as they enforce their prohibition, so they're not storing large quantities of these flammable products, it's a reasonable risk condition to be safe.
We have ninety families living across the street, basically.
Sure.
We're building another apartment complex next one to Gamarlos. And it just seems to me to be a concentration of population and unknown materials. And no real fires.
And residential uses, especially those high densities, are much higher risks for fire hazards than a storage unit. Much higher.
But, you know, okay, I made a point.
I, I don't disagree with you, but until something can be done on a townwide basis to improve fire protection in town, you're gonna face this issue over and over. We have no reason to.
Okay, any questions on eighteen? Okay, about twenty? And then twenty-one? And twenty-two? And twenty-four? Pardon if I make a motion with granted waivers. Okay, Richard?
I'll second.
Brandon, seconds. Allos in favor? Poses?
I oppose the waiver as to.
Okay.
Seventeen. Favorable to this.
Okay. Okay, let's go over the staff recommendations right now and then we can expand upon it. The first one I'd like to bring up is the one on Michael Jasmine's letter. I'll read it to you and you can respond. Upon review of the plan submitted, I have the following concerns. This is Michael Jasmine, our corner enforcement officer. The desired Cobble Hill access was not part of the original plan. And it's my understanding that was eliminated for future use. A review of the property files supports this. This was a negotiated and agreed upon arrangement with the nearest neighbor to say nothing of what the TPW director's opinion may be. So you got a negotiated agreement, so. Sure.
Why wasn't Mr. Pappas asked to be part of this agreement? So you have a neighbor negotiating an agreement with the town that affects a different property name?
Well, I would, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, okay? But from what I understand, I'm betting real estate, maybe Bill can back me up. If there's an agreement and it usually goes along with the property sale and it's incumbent upon them to check all those deed restrictions and the company's pawn that deed. That would have been registered.
If there's an agreement between the Fockners and the town, that's fine. How does that affect Mr. Pappas? He wasn't a party of the agreement. And you're trying to halt him to this agreement?
If he bought the property after agreement, it's incumbent upon the property buyer, the buyer of the property, to check all those issues.
They own this property for decades before any of this happened. So this was some agreement, I'm not aware of it, I've never seen it. Mr. Pappas has never seen it.
Well, I, I can't dispute.
He describes it as, as with the nearest butter, which I assume is the Fockner family. And I don't, I don't think legally the town can hold a third party to some agreement between two other parties.
Well, generally, my, my understanding of real estate law is if you buy a piece of property, all agreements that are in place at that time, unless you negotiate them back out, are enforceable.
In this case, you didn't buy the property. The town discontinued Winchester Road. And each of Butter home was given their portion to the meeting. So, so the western purchase of the property was allocated to both parts. I, I'd be in agreement with, with you. I, just reading this, that was my first thought, that the that curb cut may have been discontinued for the Fockners. But, but there's, there's nothing here that indicates it was discontinued for John Pappas. I don't know what the original plans, have that not been part of.
I wish we had.
When it was divided, I'm understanding, but would be no longer used.
It better be, it probably would have been clearer if we had the original letter sitting in front of us right now.
Yeah, if we had that file and, and if, if the parties had, had access to it.
Correct.
I'd like to make a suggestion from the board, one just we need to hear. Maybe we can leave the curb cut out of this approval. Or just require me to apply for a driveway permit to get permission to use it. That brings the town to make the decision on whether this can be used as a driveway to this property. That'll give all the parties involved a time to find this agreement and see if it's something that runs with the land or something that just affects Town of Swansea and the name.
What's, what, what way are you on that proposal, Mike?
I'm just curious, you say there's maybe just one or two cars, why, why is this a big deal to have in the first place?
I mean, they're using, so why take it away? Because it's not introducing a hazard. It has good line of sight, it has good drainage, it's a safe distance from the intersection. It's not cars queuing and backing up into the street. It forces, it gives somebody who's at this building a chance to get in and out without backing up, which is always safer circulation on site. So we'd just like to continue to use it, it's not a problem. But if there's something that prohibits it, then please make us aware and they can deny my driveway from the application.
Anything else from the board?
Is that the same driveway that they used when it was Naughty Pine?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they've been using it all along.
They've been using it for my entire life, since I've lived in town here. It's nineteen sixty-one, the Pappas family has been using it.
Well, I think the reasonable would be to require a agreement with the town to the TPW to approve the curb cut and driveway access. That way, if there is a legal issue, he can dig it up and we can go from there. But we're gonna make it a condition of the approval.
Aside from Brandon, I think it's, it's pre-existing use, it's been there. I don't see why it's gonna generate discussion. Just goes with the plan.
Obviously, there's, there's a conflict somewhere, although it's backed.
That's what I'm trying to.
And I think. Why, why require them to go through the driveway permitting process? It's all, it's, it's pre-existing, it's been there for sixty years.
The original width is probably acceptable.
What's, what's the width of it, Joe?
This is a thirty steel, so it's probably twelve or fifteen feet wide. I mean, it clears out, it's, it's straight at the property line. Looks like it's maybe fifteen feet wide, half an inch. I guess I, wanna ask a question too. Why wasn't this raised when we came in with a plan to redevelop for the front three buildings? Because it was on the plan then.
Mm-hmm. I don't, I don't have an answer for that one.
I mean, I'll ask Mike about it.
I mean, it was raised when you came in for the.
For the boundary line adjustment.
Boundary line adjustment, why?
Passed it down the road to this street.
I know, but why didn't you research it? It was brought up, but there was some concern about that.
I received Mike's letter maybe a week ago. You know, just really missed, it's on my list of things to do. If you're making a condition approval, that we have to get a driveway permit approved, then that opens the door for the town to shut it down. If they can provide a valid reason to do this. They've used this since nineteen sixty-one, to my knowledge. It's been no problems, no issues. It's not an active overly used curb cut today. Just don't understand all the concerns. Unless there's some agreement that I'm not aware of.
Yeah, yeah.
Like Jasmine seems to think there is.
I don't know if Mike was approached by the neighbor or not, do you know that?
I'm sure he was, because the neighbor was opposed to everything he could do. Surprised I'm not here tonight.
So what's the wishes of the board on this? I need a motion one way or the other, whatever you wanna do.
Make a motion, because I'm saying that's part of the, so I'm actually, so they researched, so.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Since the move, so.
The move is to table the issue until our next meeting. But that means to.
That means that.
We would not be approving a project tonight if we tabled that one aspect.
I don't think it's right of us to do that, especially since how they've already been approved.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't either. I think we need to give them an answer one way or another.
Not above the procedural procedure. Has that been seconded yet?
No, no.
They can't put a different motion on it, take a moment?
Well, let's deal with this one first. Am I gonna get a second? Can I guess that motion is dead? Okay, Steve, you wanted to make a motion?
I would move that we approve the application. And refer to the appropriate border agency for the.
There may be DBW, there may be the show.
Approve the application, referring that point to.
Probably be a condition, it'd be a condition.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, now we're gonna have discussion on it before we, hold on.
Of just this one issue, not, not.
We're just dealing with this one issue right now.
I, I still don't think it's right, it's been a driveway, it's there, they're not proposing any changes to it. They've been using it for many, many, many years. So why are you gonna make it get a driveway permit all of a sudden? You know, if it was something that they are proposing on many changes to it, or a brand new driveway to begin with, then that might be in order, but.
Did we have, did you, did you second that, Mike?
Right, fast.
Okay, just make sure.
My take of, of this information was that from the previous, and I, again, I'm new here, so, but from the previous approval, that there was some agreement that they would discontinue that use. That, that's just what I gathered from Mike's letter, that's why I like it's kind of confusing of what actually is happening. But from, from Mike's letter, that there, on some approval, there was a condition prior, that's, that's my take on it, but.
Okay.
Just the information that I have.
And, and I believe the, the only issue I gave here is between the town and, because we owned the property at the time, and the neighbor. That's my take on it. It wasn't part of, like Bill said, it wasn't part of a purchase, so that is off the board right there. So we have a motion and a second, and we need a vote, so all.
Just wanna get a clarification.
Sure, I understand the motion. Is it you're approving the application? Has submitted with the request that they apply for a driveway permit?
We're not, we're not approving the entire application?
No, yeah, that's what was said.
The, the application you approved and that they be directed to the particle drug.
Is that what you seconded too? We can't, we can't do a motion to approve because we haven't had the public hearing yet. So that would not be in order. Okay, now, if we go down the road, once we have the public hearings, we can bring this issue up again and you can make it a conditional approval of the approval.
Yep.
But you can't approve it before the public hearing.
They can.
Okay. So we'll leave that for now. So we'll leave that for now, and then you can bring up the motion if you want, or we motion for approval or disapproval. Okay, let's move on to the staff recommendations now. Although the zoning ordinance does not include a specific parking requirements, but it's self-storage. Staff recommends incorporating a proposed parking area on the plan. That's what they want to like to say.
These will be the beginning dedicated parking spaces, including a handicap parking space. That's explained before. Everybody parks directly in front of their own. Or what can you, in terms of.
Okay. Boy like to weigh in on that?
Where's that?
It would be. You got it? Okay, right now, we're dealing with parking plan. My personal take is on it, because of the type of business that it is and people packing in front of their own units, I don't know if you necessarily need a general parking area. But that's just my take.
Yeah, I agree with you. Who's gonna park way down here when your storage unit's down here?
Right, to look, look, you know, they want their refrigerator to weigh four hundred pounds down, plus the parking lot. Any other input? Okay, a motion on that one, please?
We have to withdraw the motion that's currently on the table.
We, the privacy approval?
Did you?
Yes. Sorry. Okay, now we're on, on, on the parking plan. We're here, a motion about the parking plan. Consensus, don't really need a vote on just consensus. No, we need a consensus though, whether we want to make, make them have that as a condition or not. Okay. Moving on, fencing material height should be disclosed on the plan. That shouldn't be a big issue for you.
Yeah, it's a six foot high chain link fence through the gate area and around this corner, north and south. So six foot high chain. Now add that to the plan.
A condition of approval. Moving on, power supply location should be indicated on the plan.
I'll add that to the plan as well, it's gonna originate here in the center of the southernmost building of the front water. And the three gates, and the conduits will go to the north end of each of the new buildings.
Okay, we make data commission approval too. Increase landscape buffer between residential abutters to twenty feet between southern, northern and southern abutters.
And I think I heard explained our proposal going with the arborvitaries. Go together, the twenty foot height, it'll be a year-round screen through the residential areas and post use. Like to keep these areas open for snow storage and for drainage system on the west side, it's snow storage on the south.
So you're basically asking for a waiver for that?
Yeah, I guess, and that's.
Yeah, because that isn't, that isn't our zoning ordinance. Input from the board?
It would be nice to have, you know, just thinking if it's twenty-four hour access and I lived next to that and had a nice open field and had headlights shining at one in the morning. Would be nice to have to make sure that it's blocked. So. Whether one row of arborvitaries will. Spice or not, I'm not sure.
The board feels it's, it's necessary, we were listening. We can make this section a fence instead of chain link fence, we can make it solid fence. Six feet of solid fence, which can address your headlight issue, also buffer noise a little bit. Still want to do the arborvitaries though, because that's permanent here now. It's also instant, let's get planted. And so. But we're willing to add a solid fence in that area.
I see that as preferable to maintain the.
So, so could we have a motion on that? Michael? Does that apply you?
Add a condition of, of solid fence to protect that buffer.
On, on both northern or southern or just one, Mike?
I know, it's the everything itself.
Yes, this is the open field area, it's already a heavily wooded area here, closest to the house. And then this is the other path that's there. So we added plant and screen back here. Headlights shouldn't be issued, really just a forest, but that's what we.
Don't make you.
The other side, apparently, yeah.
Okay, motion is to add a solid fence on the northern side?
Yeah.
Probably, I'm just good, but there's also a stipulation on that. One of these, for me, it's one of these trees dies that is replaced, not left.
Landscape being maintained, well, landscape maintained. Can I have a second on Mike's? Okay, seconded by Lily, all in favor, say aye. Post? Condition? Okay, the last one we're gonna deal with to recover Hill Road access is subject to approval and permitting from Swansea DPW. I guess we can make that a condition if you would like. If not, I need a motion on that.
We make a motion, stipulation, our motion on this.
Well, we're gonna do a motion on it, yeah. I need a motion if we want to do this. Addition of a cobblewood access is a subject to approval and permitting from Swansea DVW. We can make it a condition if we want to vote on it. Or not. We're doing conditional approvals from the staff, so. That's, that's his, that was his motion.
Right.
But now we're taking it up here, and then we're getting all the conditions and, and all the additional approvals done at this point. So it's up to the board whether you want to make that a condition of the approval.
I don't think we should.
I still have the same.
Well, I need a motion.
The move is a pretty condition that the.
The curb cut is the best condition, so stated, the record conditions.
Okay.
Do I have a second on that? You seconded that, Richard? First and second, and any further discussion on it? All those in favor? How many is that, raise your hands, son.
For the condition of the curb cut.
Approval and permitted by the, the DVW. Three. Okay, three for the motion? And who's opposed? And you go for against, so the motion doesn't carry. Any more questions about this project from the board? Are anything others? That was the last one. On the other side, the landscaping. Landscaping must be maintained in good condition, or make that a motion, Richard? It's on the next page. Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor? Post? Now we can move on to any other questions the board has at this point. About the entire project.
So, I'm interested in the water.
Yep.
The twenty-five year detention location, what was that? Was that, that was for the original project?
No, this is for the expansion.
Okay, so there's no, so.
Original project, all of this area was paved. And one of the tiny antiques, building, parking, we didn't change, so there was no change of the runoff. All the runoff sheet drains down to the south end of the property. It's been that since nineteen sixty.
Alright, so this is for the.
Back three buildings, we treated as a separate drainage.
And the.
Containment, right. So all of this area discharges into the storm.
There is no, are you? Do you need state approval for that?
No. It's, I mean, we use a professional engineer, we do the hydrocat drainage studies, which are the same studies that DES requires when we need state approval, the drainage systems are much larger. Most towns, and I think Swansea requires that twenty-five year design storm as the basis for storming. Building features. Some catch basins are considered first flush in the stormwater system, they have subs, so sediment from sand settle out into the catch basins, water then can run through our system. A series of drainage manholes which act as additional treatment areas. And we go into a stone line swell in this area and into a vegetated stormwater. Provides our tertiary trip. Overflows. And sometimes we get a heavy rainfall, then a gene, the ground is frozen, you know, after vegetation. It's designed with an overflow in this area, discharging the overflow onto this site through the vegetated area, and off-site it would enter into other manor by Mr. Parks. And like I said, the design storm is now four point one five inches.
Haven't had that in a while.
All right, do we have any more questions from the board at this point? No, let me open it up.
Well, are we opening up to?
I'm gonna open it up to the public hearing, Richard, then you can ask, okay? I'm gonna, seeing no more questions from the board at this point, I'll open up the public hearing. Hey, Richard, go ahead and ask your question.
And I don't know that they discussed that at all.
But yeah, they, they, they discussed the project, but they didn't bring that up at all, I can recall.
And I think the experience of the members at that point may not have thought about the output for this session, but it is there. And my concern, I was telling you. Is that salt, it does not get absorbed into the plants or into the soils, but it gets those right into the water. And so this is again, when you're talking about salt storage and that drainage, it's going right into the hot river. And my other question has to do with the storm drains, do they have any oil separators or any way of retrieving oil from the pavement? Because then that's going into your stormwater drainage area. And where it will accumulate, and as you said, if it overflows. The other point is, we don't see where those wetlands are beyond the upper folder. But there's California work back there, which is that squiggly line at the very, very top of the plan. And so I don't know what the distance is between any wet soils and that basin. So, I don't have that information.
Oh. I guess I'll respond, just I can. The, I'm very aware that Swansea has a large regional aquifer under a large portion of the town. And it's a tremendous resource for the town of Swansea. I think you guys are crazy enough to pick over the low on California Street and operate it as a municipal facility. That's just my personal opinion, not part of the segment. When we design stormwater systems over aquifers in sandy shores, which is what this is, the state requires us to do surface water treatments. They don't want us to collect and infiltrate all the groundwater, all the stormwater into the ground because of the very reason that Barbara mentioned, they're afraid of introducing contaminants that won't be treated adequately passing through sandy soils into the groundwater supply and eventually into the aqua. So we create these piped surface systems, which aren't LID, they're not low intensity designs. But there is a purpose to these, the purpose to these is to confine the runoff into these controlled areas. Now, we, if oil is a consideration, I don't consider a low intensity use like this a high risk for having oil spills and that type of use. If this was an industrial yard or, or a junkyard or a oil company's distribution facility, then it would be a lot different, they'd build in a lot more protective measures. But what we can do in the catch basins that are here, if you want additional protection, is we can add, add hooded outlet pipes. A hooded outlet pipe is just a ninety degree elbow that is made of the same material as the piping material. They, they clamp it on when they build the system. And what the hood does, water can collect in the catch basin. And as it reaches the bottom of the hood, only water in the hood can get up through the hood into the pipe. Because here's the pipe, it's at a higher elevation than the bottom of that inlet. So what that does, if gas and oil is on the water in the catch basin, it's floating. And only a tiny, tiny bit that gets directly into the end of that outlet hood can get into the system, the rest is contained in the catch basin. And then usually once a year, the catch basin service comes along. And you've seen the trucks where they suck out the catch basins, they clean out the gas and oil that's accumulated in any setup that's accumulated. So it's an additional level of treatment if you think gas and oil is a high risk for this type of use. I don't think it is, and I don't think DES would require it even, but it can be added in, in all of these catch basins to provide that additional degree of protection if the board thinks that that's necessary.
Yes, Barbara?
Well, I'm gonna just say that if you just went to a parking lot, like, you know, Hanford's or Market Basket on a rainy day, and you can see the swirls, because ideally everyone maintains their car, but that's not always the case. So, you know, this is a place that's where you'd be having cars, that's what it does, cars go out there and people are gonna be loading and load loading with various types of trucks, it's not just a passenger car, it's a truck or whatever. So I'm just saying that, you know. So, I'm just saying that, you know, all you have to do is look at a parking lot after a rainstorm to know that there's that risk. And this is a parking area, as the discussion was earlier.
Go ahead.
And she gives you a good example. Go to Market Basket. I mean, you have five, 600 cars in the parking lot, and it seems like every time I go by, that place is full. So, I mean, that's just a tremendous amount of activity, tremendous amount of traffic in cars. And I agree, in a commercial shopping center, we always use those systems with a bit of effort. And, and additional filtration measures, and usually because the answer the E S requires. But in an area like this, we have eight or 10 cars a day. I mean, it's just such a low risk. Why force that expense on the business? It just doesn't seem proper and practical to me. The other part of this, which I didn't address, in our surface stormwater treatment area. We're not infiltrating water anymore. We're collecting it in the stormwater pond and, which makes it visible. So, if there is a spill and you see a sheen on the water, then a phone call can be made. You can call the fire department, you can call the E S, and they're gonna come out and deal with it. So, you've got that added protection as well. It's not a closed system. We're not, we're not collecting it in infiltration strips and directing it straight into the ground, into the groundwater. So, I think this is a proper design for this use in this location.
Barbara.
Can you address where the distance is from the top border of that property to the next wetlands or to California?
Well, the wetlands on the property itself.
Right.
And I identified those. I mean, we considered most of this area as all wetlands. And I don't know if this line is the brook line or if that's just more wetland areas. Maybe there was open water that day, but I didn't wander out there. It was pretty muddy when I was at the site as I was. I consider all of this vegetated.
How, how, but to Barbara's question, how close is it from the edge of that catch basin to the nearest mark to wetland? Mark?
From the stormwater area or the catch basin?
Uh, sorry, the storm, stormwater area.
This is a 30-scale, so, I mean, the distance to the property line here, that's a 20-foot setback. So, that's about 30 feet from the property line. And then, I'm not sure where the brook is.
And then you have the two wetland areas right there.
Those are existing on the site.
Yeah, that was Barbara's original question, and then that was what I was trying to clarify. How, what is the distance between the stormwater area and the wetland?
Yeah, this, this line represents, I should use the other page. It's the outside of the berm around this stormwater collection area. So, this has the grading. The shaded line that you see is the top of the berm. It's four feet wide, right at the top. That's where they can have easy access in for maintenance and more. And it is all the way down to elevation 490. Top of the berm is elevation 493, so it's three feet high. Then it slopes back down from that area adjacent to the wetland site. So, we're only, we're up here a couple of feet away from the wetland area with the bottom of that slope. But the wetland is protected by the berm that's here. The overflow area coming out is a lower elevation than the top of the berm. So, if any excess water builds up in the stormwater pond, it'll discharge before it can overtop the berm into those adjacent wetland areas.
Okay, Barbara.
Jim, is it reasonable, given the type of usage, to request that salt not be used in this area, but that just cleaning the area?
I wouldn't recommend it. I mean, the alternative to salt is gonna be probably calcium chloride and sand. And the sand builds up very quickly in the catch basins and in the pipes and eventually into the stormwater pond. It starts creating maintenance problems. So, salt still remains the preference. I mean, it's not such a high area, there's gonna be a lot of large applications to salt. But, but if it's icy, for liability reasons, the landowner has to do something to address it. Otherwise, he's negligent.
Well, the other side of that is, is that salt usage, I mean, has to do with the number of storms, not necessarily the use of the area. So, unfortunately, again, the salt goes right into the water and, you know, I mean, goes into the ground, it's into the water, it, it doesn't disappear. So, um, it seems like the easiest thing to do is to cut down on the amount of salt or use something else as an alternative or mechanical removal, since it is such a small area, you know?
Well, what about the state of New Hampshire DOT that plows right there? They dump salt on the roads by the ton, you know what I mean? Somebody residential or a small business like that, they're not gonna use a third of the amount that the state of New Hampshire plows and just plows off to the side of the road. It has, has it sitting right there, so even if you did say, okay, can't use salt, can't tell the state of New Hampshire not to use salt on the highway right there.
But we've been talking about the state of New Hampshire, we're talking about a specific wetland in our town.
Yeah, and I'm saying that, that highway is, what, how many feet is it from the catch basin right there? You know what I mean?
Right, well, I'm talking about the, the, the snow dump.
And I'm saying, I'm asking what, what the difference between the snow dump with them plowing their parking lot versus the state of New Hampshire plowing all the salt off to the side of the road at the beginning of their parking lot?
But it, it's not, that's not within our jurisdiction, but we do have an ability to handle this particular situation.
Yeah, but I'm asking you, how, how is it any different?
I'm not saying it's a different. But I'm not saying it's good, but that's not the question.
But we can debate, we can debate that later.
Taking care of this particular site and the fact that this is, you know, just be, if, if somebody's doing something that's not a, a good management practice, does that mean everybody should be able to do it because somebody else is doing it? And that only intensifies the use then, instead of taking care of the risk. And so, I'm just talking about trying to take care of the risk and, you know.
Great, Jim.
I understand your concerns, and I hear this conversation all the time. And I agree with your comments about the New Hampshire DOT, they're the worst offender. If the town shares your concerns, then the town should be taking steps, maybe through the conservation commission, maybe a town meeting, to designate the critical areas within the town as either a no-salt or a low-salt area. As you're traveling around, I'm sure you've seen road signs, this is a low-salt area. Even DOT has to respect it. So, they're warning you, the roads may be slippery here because we can't put all the salt on that we wanna put. The purpose is to protect a valuable resource, either a wetland or aquifer oil. So, if the town does that, and this is part of the areas, then I'm sure John will respect that, just like everybody else. I don't think it's reasonable to impose it on him and expose him to the additional liability if somebody has a slip and fall. I used to own the part of a property management company 10 years ago, C B Property. Yeah. Owned it with my brothers, operated it for 10 years. And we did all the commercial shopping centers in Key. Every year, we were involved in numerous lawsuits. Us as the property manager, as well as the landlord, the shopping centers, due to slip and falls. And we were accused of being negligent because somebody slipped on the ice when they stepped off the bus in front of him. And slipped and fell and made that injury. And so, we had, we fought all the lawsuits. Usually, we were okay, but a lot of them, insurance company just settles, children crazy. But then, but the issue is, the slip and falls happen all the time. And if you slip and fall and get injured, go see a lawyer and sue the property. And I guarantee you, can't guarantee you, but it's highly likely the insurance company will settle. You'll get something out of it, because that's the preferred way to handle it. But it's a real issue with your property. And the bigger the property, the bigger the issue with it. So, I saw it over and over again until I finally get out and sold the company. I had to buy additional liability insurance as part of the company because of all the lawsuits for the handling. So, it's, it's a big deal. I understand your concerns of the environment, and I agree with it. I wanna protect the aquifer too. I think we designed a system that does that. And if it's, we're not hauling snow into the site and dumping it. So, I don't, I disagree with your representation of a snow dump. We're just pushing the snow that accumulates from the roofs and between the buildings to either side of the site. That's it. So, it's a real small amount. How much snow do we even get anymore? With the changes in the environment, we're getting less and less snow over here. Just not gonna say that, it'll be funny. So, I think we, we, we haven't ignored it. I think we've addressed it. And we've designed a proper system that should meet your concerns. If it starts becoming a problem, I mean, do you monitor water quality in your aquifer? I've never heard that Swansea does that, I'm not aware of it, and you aware of it?
I mean, there are individuals, like, I think they have a lot of triples because of the, to be east, you know, that kind of a situation.
Right, so I'm testing for that, I'm testing for P F A's, but do they test salinity levels? And we don't, so it's not sure.
Should we ask for that?
Yeah, they'd probably be willing to do it if the town's willing to pay for it. I mean, how far do you wanna go to get the research? But that's how you develop the protection programs to say this needs to be an all-salt area. So, it's, you know, it sounds like a simple request that you're making, but it really isn't. And there's a big liability side to it, that I'm not sure you fully recognize.
Hey, do we have any other members of the public relievers to speak? Or anybody on the zone? Okay, Bobby, you have another one?
No, it's just that I think there's two issues here. One is, you know, whether or not you wanna put the hooded basins in, you know, for petroleum products and any other residues that might be coming off the pavement. And it also helps with sedimentation, doesn't it?
Sure, yes, yeah. Keep it in the catch basin long, where there's lawsuits and stuff.
Right, and, but the, the salt issue is a separate issue to that, which we need to deal with in this town because we continue to allow these developments. And without any kind of control, so we don't start with these. And yet, we have a drinking water source, you know, right there on that side of town. So, somehow, we have to deal with protecting that. But if we don't do it on an individual basis, then we need to do it somehow.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing no more questions come from the public, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And we cannot discuss any more from the public. And now we go open it up for discussion amongst the board.
On, on the most recent issue, I think, you know, if my neighbor's truck goes there a couple of times, we're gonna need that hooded, uh, that hooded basin we put in, it's, there's an issue with this truck. So, I know you say only a couple of vehicles a day, but that one vehicle will do it, will do the duty.
Any more discussions? I'm seeing no more discussions, a, a.
Well, I, yeah, I, I would like to make a motion to include the basins into the stormwater treatment.
As a condition?
Yes.
Do I have a second on that? Okay. Motion for catch basins by Michael and.
Put it up.
Did you get that? Seconded by Steve Malone. Any further discussions on it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's gonna be a conditional. Anything else? Then a motion for approval or disapproval is on the table.
Can we just review what conditions we said?
Oh, yeah, well, I got some of them here, then Sarah can back me up. The fencing material on height should be disclosed on a plan as conditional approval. Power supply location should be indicated on the plan, which is a conditional approval. Increased landscape buffer between residential butters to 20 feet. Uh, we have, no, that was just fence.
Solid fencing added.
Solid fencing added to the north as a condition. And what else do we have there?
And then the hooded outlet pipes.
And the hooded outlet pipes as a condition. The maintenance, correct, that's right, thank you both. Anything else? Then we'll need a motion.
First conditions and.
Okay. Steve Malone makes a motion to approve, pending on those conditions and conditional approvals. So, seconded by Richard. Any more discussions on it? All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
You're good to go, Jim. You got a little more work to do.
I was talking about wetlands.
I get the same issue sometimes, so. Okay, let's stand in recess for about five minutes, they gotta get set up on the way. I gotta go in there myself. And this is gonna be a little difficult.
Uh, Jim? Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And we, it's a, yeah, yeah, she's on the, just. Yeah, she's a.
It's supposed to be out.
It's right.
Yeah, I do not.
Better though.
Back to the eighties? Did you know when I moved here, I was okay because I had a job when I got out of there. I got out of the reins and I came back to town in eighty after I got out. I had a job lined up, that was no problem. I tried to get a home loan to the VA. Nobody decided to touch the VA because I couldn't charge it 14%. That's what, that's what the house money was worth. Well, your buddy there that teaches at school, or you still with the homebound teacher? Yeah. What's his name that teaches at school? Yeah, he tried to tell, I went through his real estate school. He tried to tell him he was doing it back then. I said, well, it must have been pretty well hidden because I called the VA and asked them for a bank for me. They said, nobody's in the nation at all. For about a year I had to pay the 14%. I had 50% down on the house. Excellent credit. I still had to pay 14%. APR too. I fortunately found a bank down in Massachusetts. Took me a while, but I had to have a place for my family to live. You wasn't even spotted back then, probably. When I, in eighty? You were born in eighty one. I stopped chasing women in eighty one when I got married. That's eighty one is the year I stopped drinking at all.
They closed that room?
Because. His dog's in a bar? He finds, he jaws us out. The first time he called me a babysitter. I don't see anybody in the public.
I enjoy it next week and the week after. So it'll be another, another weekend.
Why is he going to retire? Take over his job or?
He's been asking for it the past few years.
They're having a hard time finding somebody.
Okay, let's bring the meeting back to order, please. And now we have, let's name a company again, again. Okay. If you would speak to the completeness of your application first.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Andrew Keller. From New Hampshire Solar Garden, which is the applicant here. I have with me Cassandra, Nancy from Novus Engineering, who will speak to any technical components to our application. They'll work through the completeness for you at the minute here. And then we open it up to any technical questions. We also have, at the current order, and my company will be the future owner of this property. So we have some legacy knowledge to share. If there's any, like, past questions about this property. Yes, a lot of information, a lot of approvals to be brought back in earlier, maybe just go. And I know Barbara's here as well. There is a component that's related to the town that I'm going to speak to in a minute. About the community power initiative that the town has been moving forward with, that this project has track benefit from. So if you'd like, Mr. Chair, to give a little background about the project that she passed over, the completeness, before we go right to completeness and before we.
Well, it should go to completeness first, and then, they weren't going to approach this tonight. This is a fairly large project. And we have two of our more senior board members that are on vacation this week. So we're going to do that, and we'll let you do a presentation. And then I'm going to ask the board to continue this to the next meeting. Just because of the large scope, and I think they need to weigh in on it too.
Can we see how that goes for the night? See, we answered a lot of questions.
Well, we, we, we'll have a short thing on that, but I really want to make this a two-day thing. See, we usually, we, on a smallest like you saw tonight, we'll do it one, one, only one day. But when I get to the larger ones, it's better to split it up. First of all, you get, do your presentation, and then the board has time to think and look at all. So we can come back and ask pertinent questions to you. Okay, and don't read anything into that approval or disapproval when we do that, because that's not what it's about. Okay, so if you, right now, to speak to the, the completeness of your application, then we'll let you go on any type of presentation that you wish to do.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sabra, as we said. And I just wanted to, I wanted to start with the overview plans, that you get it, because the way that's, site is rather large, 122 acres, you have to put it into three drawings with site plan and grading drainage. So if I understand you correctly, on the acceptance of the project that we have on a number of sites, if it's something like that, yeah, we need to go through and make sure that you're in agreement with what we have considered to be included and what we're looking at as not applicable or what we're requesting made for. So just to give you an idea of what the project is, it's 909 West Swansea Road. It is owned by Patrick Putnam Realty, Mr. Park, who's here. It is about a 21.4 acre property. About a, I should be able to return. There are commercial uses to the south. There are residences to the east, residences to the north. The, if I'm pronouncing correctly, is the Ashland River. It's to the east.
That's pretty good.
600, 700 feet away. And there's a, there's a low area here with a brush that runs through, I don't know if that's called. What, what in Hampshire Solar Gardens, a piece of development, is about a three half, like what? Solar array, solar farm. It is a site that is definitely very well suited to this type of project. It's not that well suited to a number of other business interests because of the steep terrain. I mean, in terms of the terrain, we're going to have to do some levelings. One high grades, leveling off some of the peaks, a few valleys, and, you know, looking at the cut and fill balance with cut and fills that we don't, much alteration of the existing site, keep this preserved as much as possible. We have, this is a once constructed site, it's a very passive site. There may be three to five visits per year for maintenance. We show two access roads, technically dry roads. One of them is a utility company, Access Premierly, and their, their businesses are extremely rare. And then there's a 22 foot wide proposed road in the north end of the property that would be for construction and then for the three to five visits annually for maintenance. It starts out at 22, 22 feet. It narrows down to approximately 15 feet. We do show terminating, but we understand there's interest in continuing that road along the west side of the property, which were completely amenable to, you know, in hazardous, the sort of ATV passage the fire department's talking about. Maintenance of the site would be minimal and vegetated. There would be no application of pesticides or pesticides. It would be, it would be long, it would be two, three times annually. We do show for drainage, surface water detention. The soils here are very well drained. It was why it was looked at as a gravel pit. You know, if you walk the property, you'll see that the surface is sand, sandy gravel. And so showing detention sediment bases, or detention bases at the north and south end of the property with split connecting scales that would bring it down. It should easily hold 100-year storm. And we have planned sediment four bays and proposed outlet structures in the event that we have two 100-year storms back to back. So also around the property with the perimeter fence for security, we're proposing non-wire, which is more wildlife friendly, no larger openings, and we'd also place the fence some height above the ground, maybe about 12 inches to allow for wildlife to pass underneath. Once constructed, at the construction period, it's approximately 35 months. And once it's built, you know, it's going to be built in stages, you know, they'll have to put in first the foundations, then the mounts, and then the panels. Once it's done, again, it's, it's a passive site. There will be some vegetation. Most of the trees along here will be maintained. They may need to take a few down orders to get the access road in. What we don't need to have in place permanently will easily regrow since Mr. Putnam investigated the site 12 years ago. There's quite a bit of secondary growth in the property, a lot of shrubs and young trees, so it does tend to regrow. We show an equipment pad in addition to the solar arrays. Everything here is in the business district, there's nothing in the residential zone. And I can go through the checklist if you're ready.
Yeah, I noticed that you had just one waiver being requested on landscape plan.
We are requesting the landscape plan also. Because primarily, the perimeter landscaping is unchanged. We do, we have considered and are open to some kind of screening at the, at the base of the property. You know, something that would have an attachment to the existing, to the, because it's not a very dense. So it's a solid and not a, you know, permeable barrier. And then it's in the 5% slope. We're looking at a 10% slope for most of the road.
Now, would you like to get into, excuse me, for a minute? Can I have a motion on the completeness of the application, please?
I have a question on what the name of the project is.
So, what do we have for that?
Yeah, the West Swansea Road Solar Garden.
It would be the name of the project too.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the application completeness? We have enough information to move forward to the presentation.
Sign off by the fire department on reviewing this.
While we can.
Part of the application.
Did they weigh in at all?
Yeah, there should be a department head review.
We will have that information, and then we can consider that when we consider the plan.
Is there any weapons on this property at all?
Okay, so we will have that information. And we can get into that when we consider the plan. Right now, it's on completion. Do we need any more information, in other words, on the application submission?
That's why I asked, because that's important things.
No, no wildlife hits, rare and dangerous species. We did conduct a phase one archaeological study, as recommended by New Hampshire DHR, and we look for findings.
Okay, motion on the completeness of the application, that's what's on the table right now.
I'll make the motion that we accept the application as complete.
Okay, Brandon, motions that we're going to accept the application as complete. Do I have a second?
A second.
Michael, second, sir?
Just a quick question. Their, their application indicates they're asking for two waivers. Is that, is that in this motion, or is that something separate?
That will be something separate. They're asking for it, and we'll consider those when we consider the whole plan.
So what's the other, the waiver for the landscape plan, and then what's the other waiver?
And their application.
Well.
Parking and loading requirements. It's on page two.
That's, again, would be consideration and discussed at the, at the plan. We can, with those, we can either deny them or make our conditions to change them a little bit or whatever, but we just wonder, do we have enough information to move forward with the presentation? That's what the motion is, completeness of the application. Any further discussions?
It's, sorry to be, actually declaring that. So there is, so like item 12, the location number, parking and loading spaces. Is that submitted, or is that what's being asked for as a waiver?
No, that's, the waiver I see on here is the landscape plan.
Yes. And I believe the second one, it was indicated in the letter.
Oh, for the graphic scale of, the graphic scale is.
Yes, the grading of the roads. There's no parking and there's no.
So we will consider those when we consider the plan itself. Bob, my, my, the waiver should, the, excuse me. The motion should be on, which has been first and seconded, okay, on the complete of the application. Any more questions about that? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, yep. And now she can move on to her presentation.
All right. Thank you, the board. So what I want to do is just give the board a little color on this project, because we can look at this on a piece of paper, it doesn't have as much context or as much clutter to the impact to the community. And we started this project, Mr. Putnam and I have been working, let's say desperately, we were trying to really hard to work together for the last probably six or eight years now. And we were, we looked at this site many, many years ago to try to see if it's good usage for solar. And some of the state policies and some of the rules that were evolving in our state were just, we weren't there yet. And as the state of New Hampshire started to advance some of the policies, one of the most important things they focused on is a concept called community power. It's a term called CCA, or community choice aggregation. Your community, some of you may have heard about it, may not have heard about it, but your town has been one of the towns in New Hampshire that's embraced that new law that was passed about two years ago. Like I said, Barbara, she is, I believe you're on the committee, or the pending committee that's kind of working on it. And the intent of a community power program is to basically bundle all of the electric bills of the town and bring that out to bid, so everybody can get the best price for electricity. So you as a homeowner, and you as a business owner, and the town or the school, who is the most prime amount of power, we all get the same price for power. And I think we're all seeing that right now in our state and across the country, how electric bills are, you know, going up rapidly. And we just found out that every source of rates are going up to 22 cents, which is ridiculous. We're second behind Hawaii right now. We will be in August. So the concept of community power is that we can bring all of your electric bills, you got to go out to bid and get the best possible price. So when we started this project, I reached out to the different leadership in the town and introduced it, just said, what's the feeling of the project? From a planning and zoning perspective, from acceptance, and it was positive. We started with the board's segment. We were able to negotiate a payment rule of tax agreement on the project. So we went to your, your board's segment, we got their input, we got their advice, and we've signed that agreement. So we have a way to tax these solar panels, because there's not really a heavy lift, and there's not a lot of weight on the town, not putting kids in school. We're not asking for out of fire or police requirements. It's a pretty, as Cassandra said, it's a pretty passive development. We came to the planning and, and development board and asked for some of their advice, and they said, well, we need you to go in front of the zoning, the zoning board, because it's not explicitly stated in your ordinance of how a solar project like this can be installed. If it was at the wastewater treatment plant, which you guys had an approval on, it's an accessory use, and there's language to follow. So we went in front of your zoning board last month. It was, you know, unanimously approved and accepted. And now here we are in front of your board. But I think the most important thing is that we're taking the steps carefully, we're listening to what the community has to say, what the concerns are. We have submitted our application to EverSource, which is usually our most concerning, arguably our most concerning step in the development process because we don't know what EverSource is going to tell us until it's, the work is done. You know, we've spent about thirty thousand dollars in engineering costs and we sit and wait and we're hoping to find out maybe next month what the upgrades are. So there's an additional benefit to the community. If there's any upgrades to the lines or anything, any infrastructure in the town, we're going to have to pay for it. It's part of the project cost. So other than the benefit of sharing this power, which again, there's interest in having a portion of this project offset the electric rates at a fixed number for a fixed period of time, so that way the overall electric rates for the town can come down. So I just want to share that with you, just so you understand, this is kind of a somewhat of a collaborative effort with the town. We started over a year ago, talking to the town and just kind of taking it, you know, slowly. So I appreciate, Mr. Chair, your interest in taking a couple, you know, steps to make sure everybody has the information. We'll go at your pace. We will follow up this step with submitting our project to the Alteration and Training Department at the state level. So there will be a state computer, you know, view component to this. But every opportunity we have to come in front of the board, get an approval, get some support, it only enhances the value of the project. And we're starting to receive a little bit of appropriate pressure because this community power initiative is now in the hands of the Public Utility Commission, their new, their new department, the Department of Energy, as they call themselves now, to institute the programs of towns like yours and there's many other towns across New Hampshire that are voted in their town meetings and city council meetings to move these programs forward. So it's our job now to get these projects up and running so we can actually start delivering the power and start saving, you know, this community specifically money because this would go specifically to this community at this point is our hope. So I just want to share that with you, just so you have some understanding. I'll pass it back to assign the negatives for the technical pieces. Is there any solar specific questions during or after the public hearing or capacity as well? So thanks.
So what I can do next, if it pleases the board, is to page through the package. So again, I like this drawing because it's the overview and it's everything on one page. We have type killed through the sections. So the first one, you can see the access road here, post access road, which is primarily set up for construction handles. Free visiting here by the solar company. Second sheet is the mid portion of the project site. It features the bulk of the solar arrays. We're looking at approximate seven point six acres of solar panels. Total, and then a few disturbance, a lot of disturbance will be receiving and regrowth. In this sheet, you can see that there are those scales you can see running down the eastern side and then crossing and heading to the western side. This is going to be drainage to the southern portion of the site. You can also see that the utility company access, the poles that are needed by them, the exact number of poles is not something, you know, this is typical solar farm project installation. That is still yet to be determined. And then we're showing a connection across the road with a new utility pole coming down, so it could be a perpendicular crossing. So in the machine site, you can see that the larger detention basin is down here. Moving on to the grading and drainage plan. So anyone who's familiar with this property knows it's has an interesting, somewhat steep terrain. So we looked and put a lot of effort to try to optimize where could you put an access road and how could you preserve, you know, the output that is desired for this type of project? We had to, we had to put some panels, so be it, you know, we wanted to make sure that everything was going to be safe and appropriately protected. So we did come up with a northern approach for access road. It starts out at twenty-two feet wide. We think that that is more than adequate for any type of pull over needs, you know, you've got, if you had two pickup truck trucks passing each other, a pickup truck is pulled over if somebody needs to go by. That would be available. You know, you can also find a wider portion of that that road, which is there is going to be minimally used and will likely grow over as we get toward the western of the property. You know, fire department comments that they'd like to see the gate and knockbox at the entrance. That's perfectly fine as opposed to having the gate down here and they'd like to have, you know, an ATV level type path to find an access in the future. Again, not a problem. Continuing on, you can see the array, you can see the grading, you know, these are all proposed contours. Existing site again undulates, you know, there's some, there's some pockets or bowls, you know, some small hills. So we really needed to balance all of the cut and fill so we could probably minimize the amount of material that would be taken off site and there is access to. When the southern portion, we continue the grading, you can see that everything's posed out in this direction, landing conveniently inside the basin. This is the erosion settlement control plan. So what we have, the threshold for alteration of trains, one hundred thousand square meters, you probably know, so we're definitely exceeding that. We have to get a permit from them, which we're working on at the moment and we're established, you know, after we receive your approval. And during construction, this is going to be weekly monitoring. There'll definitely be, you know, significant control setup. The contractor will be required to keep these bases clear and clean and to clean them out for the end of the project is turned over. You know, from the contractor to to the users. And this is just a sheet showing the erosion settlement control. These are some standard construction details for the solar installation. And then as you can, some of the erosion control measures that are also standard. In the stormwater report that we presented to you, we showed that we're capable and can definitely hold the one hundred year storm. And you can see a decrease from the present. Because again, we're weathering on some of the site. And all the areas between the panels will be vegetated. There's no need for water supply. There is no need for sewer. There's no lighting plan. We need lighting. Sensitive rare or native species that were detected on the property. So it will not be going before the entry fishing game, but we are allowing to go on like crossings.
Anything else you'd like to add?
There had been a series of test pits that were dug of the first, but we know of those from Mr. Putnam's apartment back in twenty twelve, on ten, approximately ten feet deep. We found out some seven, ducks and more for characterizing soils. They're all hydrologic soil with A, extreme wall drain. We have to propose to take some additional test pits at the location of the bases, not even where they are. So we can determine whether it's seasonal high ground or low ground. And that is a payment to you from our.
Me again. Is that all you'd like to add for now?
Anything else?
Yeah, it's good.
I think we're done.
Okay. So the board, it'll be your choice. Do we wish to digest this material and come back on the twenty eighth? Or would you want to proceed with it tonight? My preference is to 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 continue this to the twenty eighth. That's my preference, but it's a board decision.
That's my preference as well.
Can I ask a few questions?
You could ask a few questions, sure. Sure, we can ask a few.
You referenced other towns or communities using your system. Where are they? So that we may want to contact.
So you'd like to know some references or other projects we've done in the state? Yeah, we've done projects in Milton Hillsboro. We did one in Marlboro. We did one in see what else do we have? There's one coming up, Composelonia. There's one. See, I'm trying to think. I've done this for twelve years now. We have one down in Pittsburgh, Massachusetts, not far from here. That's started construction in a couple of months. There was a second one behind that that's in development in Pittsburgh. All of these are larger. The Massachusetts ones are about two to three times bigger than these projects. We can easily prepare. We have, we have a typical state of quality and experience document that we can share with the board and list of references Franklin. We've done quite a few projects in Franklin. We have some couple more projects, actually one of similar sizes that the proposed right now, I've done quite a bit in Franklin as well, almost three megawatts worth of projects in Franklin. So yeah, so what did you, I mean, we.
The one I mentioned, Walter, where is that located?
At the second chance, facility next to the jail.
Okay.
It's a smaller project, but it's a ground lot, same, same kind of concept.
But I'd be actually keen.
It's, yeah.
It's keen, yeah, Jalen's in keen, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I thought I remembered it being technically over the Marlboro line, but it's right there next to the jail. That's been up and running for five or six years now, I think.
Thank you. I had a question. I was wondering that you mentioned it's a three twenty-five megawatt. How many solar panels is that, just out of curiosity?
I can do that for a second.
Six thousand. Thank you. Yes, that's correct. Six thousand, yeah.
Maybe you have a couple of quick questions if we can. You guys want, go ahead. Jared, one, Richard?
All your planning is on the ground or your collection?
No.
You're running.
Oh, the conduit, you mean?
Yes.
There is, yes.
Yeah, so all the lines will come in from EverSource here, the four poles that Cassandra referenced. So that'll all be above ground, you know, on poles. And that's all of EverSource's requirements we have to follow. It's not from the weakness or the control. And then from there over to the main kind of service component where the transformers that would be, and the main service setup would would go underground and then everything would be in which you conduit. Except for where the panels themselves physically connect up, you know, between the panels.
Transformers will be fenced.
The whole project will be fenced.
No, I know that. I mean, the transformers be fenced up.
I know they'll be inside the fence line.
How high is the fence going to be?
AC.
Yeah.
So what's the lowest point on the panels?
It can be about three feet.
Well, I'm concerned about big bucks running through there and there's some up there too. Their clarity for things like you won't believe.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, I, in all the time I've been doing this, I have I have personally seen one deer inside a project before, so I know it can happen. But what we found is that naturally.
I don't think it'll happen much because there's a lot of feed in that area of farms. So it's probably not going to bother it too much.
They're going to naturally move their way around it, just like if it was a park or a home or whatever. So, but it can, yes, it can definitely can happen.
Any other quick questions?
So no landscaping, there was that issue, but it would be nice to see some, an idea of what's you're planning for landscaping within.
On the south side, you're talking about mine?
Uh, just in, yeah, just in the.
I think it was always proposed down kind of on the southern side of the hometown.
Just a screen, just a screen. Yeah, in terms of landscaping, we're not taking down anything that we don't need to. So maybe a lot of the vegetation that you see along the road may not be maintained.
No, I meant like in, as you said, there'll be just be mowing or things like that in between.
Yeah, grass seed next, standard seed next.
How many trees do you think you'll take out, just a guess?
Of a certain diameter?
Well, doesn't matter what the diameter is, but.
Because I know there's quite a few saplings that have grown in since.
Saplings wouldn't matter too much.
Yeah.
But what I'm getting to is in New Hampshire, we have what's called the intent to cut. And if you're cutting too many trees and selling them, if you're selling countries and sell them, then you have to file an intent to cut right now.
Yeah.
You might do that just in case.
I could give you a little bit of legacy behind what's happened.
Sure, Joe, go ahead.
Probably are currently. The side that runs along Route Ten for roughly twelve hundred feet. You'll notice that there are full size pine trees on most of them. Those were never cut by the prior owner. When we bought the property in two thousand nine, the prior owners had clear cut. They'd taken every stitch of lumber except the area that was in the light of light with with the HNCT. And this whole entire area was clear cut. Since that time, two thousand nine, two thousand eight, property had second, a lot of second growth.
Correct.
And both hybrids, both pine and a lot of scrub. And so in this whole side, the the west side of the property is all conservation land. And it's all heavily blue on this side.
And if I made with that also, I think some of the value of this location for the use that we're proposing to you is that it comes itself facing, so it's obviously we, solar panels love self facing directions, but also it kind of falls down to Route Ten and out towards the conservation side. So as those larger trees have grown up, they're kind of, I won't say they're, they're not below the, or above the, where the panels are, but typically what we don't like to see is if you have like a twenty foot tree, you need to be about forty feet away from the panels. Otherwise, it will be a shading impact and our goal is to minimize the amount of shading on the panels. But at the same time, if there's trees on other, you know, butter's properties, that's, we just have to deal with that and understand that we've done our best to model what the production of this array will create for power. But as we, after the project, you know, gets to the end of its permanent cycle, there's more optimization to understand, they actually do like tree height analysis and stuff like that. Again, if the tree is on the butter's property, there's nothing we can do. We just have to account for that, you know, fifty foot tree might throw off some shade on a corner of the panels at a certain time of the year. We account for that. So I don't know, we know specifically if there's any that are, how many on our property line that we may need to cut, or we do like to keep trees, you know, within, you know.
Yeah, we can mark the ones that we know that will be coming down.
Exactly.
As we get closer to that determination.
You got it. But to your point, by the smaller.
Yeah, I mean, I saw four inch, two, three inch, six inch ones, a few larger trees scattered, very scattered. Most of shrubs.
So you don't really have an intent to to cut and sell a bunch of timber?
No, no, this is, this is clearing for the purpose of grading and then installation.
Yes.
No value, just sort of right at all.
Really, I think only the like mature trees that we tie is just pretty much in the area where the access road is going to go in, just break into Route Ten. And otherwise, it's pretty much all just a second road.
Okay.
And that area that he's discussing is basically original growth. It's all part of the HNCT.
Yeah, it's really kind of a wash, you know, the value of the material that's being taken out and finding buyer of that. It's the stump of trees. It's not, there's not really any money to be made.
What is the setback between Route Ten and the first panels?
Nick.
The proper setback is fifty feet as far as how far it actually is to the panels. I'm not sure exactly, but it's quite a view on that.
So the first kind of single it's on it's a hundred.
So it might be close to a hundred, maybe eighty feet.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, would you like, are you, is there interest in bringing that for the public to make some comments so we can have some feedback from the public as well?
Well, there is no public really here today, is there? It's Barbara, but.
Okay, just wanted to give you the opportunity.
Well, we'll let it do a couple of quick questions. I can open it up, then we'll close it down and and then we'll continue everything, the public hearing back to the next meeting. So open the public hearing. Go ahead, Barbara.
I'm a little confused by the infiltration basin. Do you have a better uh, interview of that? I just, the, the setback above Route Ten.
Yes.
But when it comes down to where the trailer park is and I'm looking at the contour lines, is the trailer park above or below?
Yeah.
Or at the level of the asphalt?
It's actually above the pond, so that the very southern end of the property, it slopes back up to the trailer park.
Because there's not that much space between an infiltration basin with a twenty feet.
And do you have, we can have the twenty foot setback to the property line.
Yeah.
And then you have the units that you can see in here. And then you have the, the units that you can see in here.
Which is making the setback very funny presenting. Right, right. But I'm just saying, yeah, so people in their trailers are looking at twenty feet and they're receiving a depression. So it's not, it's really not that deep. I think when we look at about. No, 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 distance, distances, yeah, that's what I'm just looking at.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, we're going from four eighty to four seventy-six at the moment. I guess my point is that if you have a trailer right here, that's at what, four ninety, right? This is right at four ninety. So if somebody's sitting on their porch here, they're looking down.
At a, at a vegetated.
Well, yeah.
This is, this is vegetated here, but this is a.
This will be as well.
Oh, this will be?
Yeah. The basis will be vegetated.
With. I mean.
I mean, they don't have trees growing in.
No, no, but it's just vegetated, like, um, it's a.
Yeah, it's seated and grown.
So, but visually, I mean.
You'll see what would look like a shallow pond, you know, that sometimes fills up.
But was it be trees, be enough room for trees between those, um. I mean, we, the, the residences in, in that pond?
Yes, but there's gonna be some vegetation that's gonna be left along that edge. And then it's gonna be fence with this, this last center.
And the fence is gonna be, uh, around the infiltration.
Yeah, south of it. So. I mean, it doesn't matter. The Xander's point was about solar and shading. It's not relevant down here. Whatever's growing will continue to grow. And there's a, there's a wide mix of, of species in that area. Imagine that would continue on its own.
There's no big huge tree that we're worried about affecting the solar panels. Is that low growth that actually is growing up at whatever it is now? And we'll have our setbacks and it's gonna be this, the, the intent was having to have this, the slats in, in the fencing on that south side. To, to kind of shield that.
What kind of fencing?
It's, well, it's not wire, but we'll find, we'll find a product that we can mount on the fence.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's not wire. It's, it's a, it's a wildlife-friendly fence.
Uh-huh.
As opposed to chain link, which has the smaller openings, which is more severe to me. That's more of an urban look to it. This is, um, you know. This, this allows for the passage both between the openings and then we'll have something beneath it as well.
Yeah, you're starting, starting to see more in highways, like highway, newer highway work will start to see the more, it's, it's habitat-friendly fencing.
So yes, I'm, you know, I, for the long time, I've been thinking this project is up on Route ten, you know, so like you're not gonna see it.
Part of it is, yeah.
But, but, you know, it just dawned on me, the people who are sitting in this. You know, trailer park. Are, are it's the level of the panels at their level?
Um, it's not all the way at the southern end, but over the course of the whole process.
And then it'll slope up towards the north end. We're not taking the whole hill down, if that's what you're asking.
Right, no, no. And expect it.
We just get back and wrap, do it around a bit of that, as it is.
I didn't, you're asking about a new shed, is what you're asking.
Yes, and I.
What you see from the trailer as we look toward the park.
Yeah, and I was just, you know, I was thinking it was gonna be above the trailer park, just like it was above Route ten, but it appears it's not. It appears it's gonna be more like, it comes down, you know, levels off, it comes down to the base and, and then it rises as well. So they're, they're here and then we'll look down onto that and then see if they can see over.
Well, it's, it's.
That's the only thing else and all the vegetation. Would they, could they possibly maybe in the dead of winter see something?
Yeah. It's, it'd be more like looking out this way during, like you said, during the fall or winter. Because if you have a, a eight-foot fence, with, you know, that type of slat material that we're referencing. And you're here, you'd have to look up and over, but as the array goes up, depending on the type of vegetation that's there, the dog is, is gonna lose its leaves in the winter time. I think to Cassandra's point, yes, could you see it during times of the year? Yes, but during the majority of the year when there's vegetation on it, you can look up and over. The immediate area that's close to their, to their homes, but as it rises up, yes, you probably lose, like they'll see it during different times of the year.
The panels.
Exactly. Yeah, the side on it might be the, the furthest, you know, back corner of those two panels that you might be seeing from their home again. Hard to sit here and say exactly what it looks like. I've done landscape analysis before where we sat here and we decided to like put trees. You know, right there. And then after it was built, we were like, whoops, we shouldn't put them right there. You know what I mean? As far as like when we do vegetation plans, so we can tell you what we think based on, we, we know we've done, you know, different analysis of that. I think realistic, the fact that it comes down, we're gonna have that high fence and natural, you know, buffer is in place. It's gonna help keep it from not like, you know, right there looking at.
And there's no sound.
No. The decibels are sixty or less. So that's about the same as a refrigerator. So in most of these equipment, um, that will be there.
It'd be further.
Yeah, southern side.
So many forms.
So, and like the transformer would be here. Um, I think that actually might be eighty, like inverters are usually sixty.
They're on the whole.
And, and those are eighty, so.
They're on the.
You know, there, you'd have to be within fifteen feet or so here, twenty feet here.
Okay, we have somebody on Zoom with a question.
Um, is there any effect that will happen to the Pine Grove Mobile Home Park?
Have any effect?
Yeah, what would the? Yeah, negative impact.
We don't have any.
This is by Beth Mucie.
Yeah, no. No, the, the benefit to the Mobile Home Park would be the community power program that towns, putting places that they could actually save money in their electric bill. So there would actually be a benefit to all the community members.
She says, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, seeing no more public input. Barbara, you got anything else? This lady here? No? Okay, uh, at this time, we're gonna continue the public hearing. I need a motion from the board to continue this to the fourteenth. Twenty-eighth.
If I may, Mr. Chair, could I ask like just some of the board members, what, just so we can come more prepared if we do move to another meeting, what aspects of our project are. Unclear, confusing, needed for more information. We just wanna make sure we come here with more information. Sometimes we put together. Like informational packets, we, I put up websites for general information to the public, so there was things you could go home with.
I would say, first of all, there's a letter from the, uh. The, uh, court enforcement officer and one from the fire department to answer those questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't know if the board has anything else that they would like asked before.
You talked about a environmental, environmentally friendly fence. Can you bring in like a, a foot by a foot section?
Or picture, at least a picture.
Bring some.
Okay, yeah, whatever.
Yeah, no problem. Easy. Absolutely. That's really like, sometimes what we do, like we put up a, a website that's specific to the Swansea project. It has pictures and stuff that people just have to see it. I can explain it, but it's good to see it, you know, so.
Okay, Bill, you had a question.
Look, one of the bonding requirements or proposal to the dismantling of the.
A good question.
Yes, so we, all, all of our projects, we have, we have two components to that, either. Within the land lease, which will be with my company, who is purchasing land from Mr. Pudge, but as a future landowner, the land lease I will have with the project has language that says. If the town doesn't require bonding or some maturity to make sure that the project can be dismantled at the end of its life or sometime in between now and then. Then I'm gonna require it as the landlord. But what we found in ninety percent of our projects, we've done cross-doing and that it comes to the planning board. It's an appropriate request for the planning board. We have a very specific, um. Detail of what the cost of breaking these projects down is on a, on a per-megawatt basis, which is the term we use for these projects. Um, and that builds, that gets built into one of the conditions. So we have a cost that we know is today, based on not including in the scrap cost, none of the recycling cost of metal. Or the aluminum or anything like, what it costs us to completely take it apart and take it off-site and do it appropriately and, and safely. Um, and then usually we have a five-year look, you know, check-in. Because if the cost of steel goes through the roof in five years, there's a, a value to bring that cost down. We don't wanna be holding a larger surety. On the project, if there was a benefit to bring that cost down, but if it goes the other direction, it's a fair way to look for the town's perspective that. Something would happen to the company or just at the end of life of the project. There is a process to make sure, the financial process to make sure it gets taken away properly. So that's what we typically would add as a condition into our.
Yeah, we can make that a conditional rule.
And we have, have any questions? Very normal. Thank you. Please stand across. Thank you.
Anything else from the board? And do I have a motion? Did you make the motion, Eric? Okay, Richard makes the motion to continue this to the twenty-eighth.
That's, that's the public.
Public hearing. Right, exactly.
Keep the public hearing open, so.
We keep it open and then they have more way than will happen when we have no more public input.
Yeah.
Then we'll close that and then the board will have a chance to weigh in.
Okay.
And at that point, they can ask questions. We don't like to do that, but we could.
Is one last request if I may to you, Mr. Chair. If there's any question that the board members have, ask, it's appropriate, I'm sure, but there's other questions you guys think of asking, actually. Can you direct them towards Sarah and then Sarah can send them our way? So we can, we'd like to come as prepared as possible. Um, but we also recognize this is a lot and you're, you're getting so one-on-one, you know, through a fireplace right now. So, I think we can do that to help. We'd like to be prepared as at all possible.
Okay.
I'll second.
We, we'd need to have Sarah do more work anyway.
Sorry, sorry.
She's a very hard worker. She's a very hard-working lady. Uh, Michael, what did you second? The continuation?
Yes.
Okay, second by. Any more discussion? Those are in favor? Opposed? Okay, we'll see on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Okay, couple of other items to look at here before we adjourn for the evening. It's getting late. Phillips, volunteer merger, what's? Is that somebody who wants to discuss that or?
No, it's just paperwork, things to be done. You need a motion.
Need a motion.
Allow you.
Okay, let me read the letter. Okay, this is a notice of volunteer merger on RSA six seven four three nine. Uh, this notice is devised that, hey, hey, guys, hey, excuse me. We just, we got a little more business we have to discuss. Thank you. This notice is devised, the parcel is owned by Randy and, said Diana?
Yes.
Phillips, identified in the town of Swansea as tax map twenty-five lot thirteen dash two. Said lot being more particular described as volume two oh four four, page zero two zero five of the Cheshire County Registration of Deeds. And a parcel of land being tax map twenty-five lot thirteen dash six, said parcel being track. Two of the premises described in volume three one six four, page thirty-one of the Cheshire County Register of Deeds. Are voluntary merged for municipal regulation purposes. Effective on approval by the planning board and for taxation purposes at the beginning of April one, twenty twenty-three. Upon plan, planning board approval, these parcels may no longer be separated, transferred without subdivision and will hence be known as tax map twenty-five lot thirteen two. What's the pleasure of the board?
Yes.
I don't know that it says here. It does not say here what the total acreage is. Do you know what my hand?
It's not critical.
It's not critical, no. It does matter depending on what area you see, what they can build.
I'm not sure. It's, it's really a strip of land, it's like. I can't remember because this came in more than a month ago. I'm sorry.
I'll withdraw the question.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, like I said, it's all a matter of if it's residential or commercial, what they're gonna try to build, what's all that matters.
I don't believe they're trying to build anything out there.
Yeah, well, they have to come from the board anyway, CBA if it's required and then us.
Well, they won't have to come before you for residential.
Not for residential.
We're sitting on the picking with the twenty-five, what? Tax map twenty-five.
Thirteen two and.
Twenty-five, thirteen, two, and.
Thirteen six.
Thirteen six.
Thirteen two is one point one three and thirteen six is point one six.
Yeah, it's just a little.
Try to.
It's on my road.
Really be.
Just a little strip.
Really would not be able to subdivide it again.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Should I sign this or shouldn't I not? I need a motion.
You're welcome, Simon.
Richard, okay, second in by Brandon. All those in favors? Opposed? Okay. Today is seven fourteen. Okay, this is when Bill wants us to leave the debate. Transportation project nominations, the SDWR PC. So what's in, what you looking for? Glad we asked for that, right?
Um, I can.
I don't think we asked for it, we just recommend it.
Well, recommended it. So we explained to the rest of the board members what you, we want to recommend.
Personally, I don't want them, so.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's a, a traffic. It's a study that you all have read. I just heard southwestern.
Southwestern traffic.
Together, uh, with a proposal, uh, traffic calming. Coming down that stretch of Route twelve to allow for better pedestrian access to both sides of the road.
Well.
Ten, I'm sorry, ten. I'm saying, oh, but I'm going there. Uh, so the idea would be to, to work with selfless to get the.
There is, being, being that I live on the side of town and I use that a lot. Uh, there is a safety issue there, a huge safety issue. The, uh, regular traffic, like the cars and stuff like that, they do fifty, sixty, seventy miles an hour a lot. The biggest concern to me is those big trucks. I mean, I've come out of, uh, the post office, made a left, had nothing in sight either way. And by the time I get to West Street to turn left, there's an eighteen-wheeler sitting three inches from my bumper.
The only reason I stand in favor of this, because we had that before the, the bypass went through. We had that with North and South Winchester Streets. It was a desire at that time to.
Right.
I think it's an enforcement issue. I think if we pull people over and. Did a better job of that. Take care of some, I also think that there's, where, where I lived for four years, I became accustomed to that center turn lane. Most people here get nervous with that center turn. What's that? So, 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 slightly, but, but in other parts of the country, it's, it's quite useful.
Nowadays, what I, what I'm experiencing is people passing when you turn right on that. That is, um, dangerous. It's also illegal. You cannot use that as a pass lane, like the center lane.
Absolutely. It's not a, it's not a pass.
Yeah. I don't know if we'll ever close Cutler down or not, but.
You can't put that vote at thirty, thirty million dollars, I should, that makes all the sense in the world.
I don't have my vote. But.
So anyway, I, I've just, all we did was really just pass it forward to you all for study. I don't, I don't think it's something you should just, or, yeah. We should take a look at. Collaboration with Sarah, like Jasmine, and really decide if you wanna get behind. All we really did.
Okay. I think. It proves the application for the workforce housing, although our concerns, I think, right here. Was crossing kids going over to the school or just crossing road period. There's no set areas. We need to put something to control that and the speed.
Yeah, and I, I do notice a lot of people, uh, coming out of the village, in particular where Steve lives, crossing over the Gamal store. And they're basically taking their life in their hands.
And that's only getting worse, it's need to go.
Especially with the vehicle. The, uh, study shows that the average or the prevailing, not the average, the prevailing speed on that road is fifty miles an hour. I think the first thing the state should do is lower that to thirty-five or thirty, just like they do on Route twelve in the village. Because it is a dangerous thing, so, so. And that is, from what I understand from the chief, that is the highest incident roll we have of serious accidents. Between the town line of Key, the town line of Winchester. So a real service.
Yeah, just like Bill said, though, uh, the, all the troopers and the police red, uh, Salvation Army on Route twelve. You can all go to the speed limit there.
Well, first of all. Troop C does not patrol that very often. The Swansea PD do what they can, but there's also a constraint called the budget. Gas has gone through the roof. You know, and I don't know how much manpower the chief has to patrol that on a consistent basis, so.
Listen to my. Literally, like, how often people through what they're at.
Yeah.
It's not often. They, their presence.
Yeah.
Next year is over. Textures or Salvation Army, it's almost.
Oh, on twelve?
Yeah.
Yeah, on twelve, but nothing.
Saying, this is, this is one of.
Okay, I mean, we're talking about two different roads, yes, that over there, yes, that presence makes a big difference. I don't know if we can get Troop C involved a lot, if you're doing.
This is all Troop C, it's, it's black and white.
Well, it's black and white, but like I'm saying, we, we see, I see the black and whites down there occasionally, but not on a consistent basis.
Twelve?
No, ten.
Oh, I get, that, that, that was no point, that if we, if we can get, if, if that is patrolled and ticketed, like it's ticketed on Route twelve.
Right, and, and my comment was about that is we need a conversation with the chief, what a selectman does, how much time can he reasonably put on patrol in that particular area? Because what do we have, two people on patrol at a time? It's a big town, it's forty, I mean, I was on a police department, it's forty three miles in this town that need to be patrolled.
Fairness to the chief, it's just.
I'm sure. That's why conversations.
Very close.
Right.
Five, six, four, I, I don't travel town all that much. Rarely see, uh, the expression.
Yeah.
It's, it's almost a day, and you're right, Troop C definitely is over there.
I don't ever see. I see more on thirty two than I do on ten. So I think a conversation with the chief about what he could possibly look at and do for us might be a good thing too. I know the chief, no chief is very reproachable. You walk up to him and douche yourself and he'll talk here as long as you want. I think it's a good.
I can't smoke in my apartment, so I go across the street from the malls. And I look down the road and in front of me, probably around, uh, the old restaurant that closed down, and I can see the blue flash.
Oh, they are out there occasionally, but it's not like it is on Route twelve. Not even fourth, and the other addition on Route twelve too is it is thirty miles an hour through the village, so people will slow down to a little on fifth. Where it's forty miles an hour there, so there's forty, I can thought the fourteen miles an hour road to speed limit, I won't get stopped. Which makes it a dangerous thing to me, fifty, fifty, fifty five in an area is way too fast. Okay. I think what we should do, I don't know what Sarah thinks, but just what she was, talked to me about, Southwestern has a time limit when they have to have a decision made by us. And I guess we have to weigh in and then the selectmen, of course, have to weigh in again too.
I think the selectmen's, um, feedback is separate from yours, and Michael and I, Michael Brandy and I will confer and determine what to bring forward to Southwest Planning, but what I can do in the meantime is have you all read the Route ten corridor study? I can give you this copy because I have another one, and it's on my computer.
With that presentation.
Yes, yeah, I've read through that fifteen times.
But at the end of the corridor study, if you all still have it, are the recommendations, and some of them are safety, some of them are not, some of them have, um, they're all prioritized, but they also say where they think the funding is going to come from, and there are several that suggest the ten year plan. So I'd recommend if everybody, I'll email it to everybody as well, so everybody has it fresh. Review the items that have the ten year plan next to them and bring that to the next meeting and be prepared to have a conversation because that will still be within the timeframe of submitting comments and, um, applying a project to the ten year plan with Southwest, and I might be able to stretch your deadline.
If you, if you have time someday, both of us don't have a rush, just sit down at Kamalos and just watch the traffic. You can tell when the guy's doing seventy and when the guy's doing thirty or forty. You don't want to hold up in court, but you know.
In order to, the speed limit changed.
Got to go to the state.
Petitions.
That's right.
You can't, there's a local D O T that don't do a thing.
No, no, it's going to be petitions to the state, all this is going to have to pay, all these improvements. So, that's true. But I.
I had the same, same situation, thirty two, two, yellow road.
Oh, yes, you do. Yeah, you, you exactly, yeah. I'll tell you right too, come here, when you go back over to the town hall over the east road, they don't do thirty over that road either. They pass you on that road too.
How slow are you going?
I'm doing thirty miles an hour, that's what the law says, thirty. You wouldn't want me to be on the police force anymore because you might end up with tickets.
No, I'm just curious, I think nobody's passing.
Because I'm probably the only guy left around that does the speed limit.
What do we have to do?
We, we can continue it to the fourth, uh, to twenty eighth, I'm sorry, if you'd like to make that.
Make it, we can continue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Who was the actual second for that? Because.
I think I'd be.
Pick one. Any discussions that I know, site plan reviews? Again, kind of late, so I wouldn't think so. Any other business anybody would like to bring up? Then a motion.
I said it.
Okay, motion adjourned. Do you want to get hit by six people? Well, show up for the next meeting, Steve, we got more.
Oh, did we?
Did we do what?
A couple of issues with Steve.
Oh, well, did we just adjourn the meeting?
We never, ever. Vote it on it.
Never voted on it.
We can do that, like all, I couldn't find the evidence of it in the minutes.
Yeah, um, Steve's term was up in March as an alternate. All we need to do is if Steve wants to stay honest for us to take a vote to have it continue, oh, it's just another three years as a, as a alternate.
My hope is you pull me.
Okay, you would like to stay honest? Can I have a motion to keep Steve on as an alternate?
I have a motion to keep Steve on.
I have a second.
Five seconds.
Okay, then, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, you, you just got drafted again. Okay, uh, now, there's been a motion to adjourn and it's been seconded. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nobody's opposed, I'll play. Okay, good work tonight, guys.
Eleven thirty two.